Good evening and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting. We're about to solve the seat order. Thank you for your attendance again tonight. The first item on our agenda is approved agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Supervisor Kiefer, seconded by Jorgensen to approve tonight's agenda discussion. What we're going to do tonight is complete the public hearing portion of the ordinance amendment consideration. We're pretty sure we can do that. We have a long list of emails to read. We have some public comments some people would like to make, but we're quite confident we'll be able to have the conclusion of the public hearing tonight. After that, there'll be the first reading of the ordinance. And literally, we're not going to read all of the ordinance. But we have copies of it here from by now. We hope that you're well aware of what's in it. And so during the first reading of the ordinance, we will be considering any amendments from the Board of Supervisors if they choose to take any. And so that's on our agenda as well tonight. During that period, the supervisors can ask anyone any questions if they want to. We can ask questions of the wind energy companies. We can ask questions of the comments from the people of Floyd County. That's far part of the deliberation after taking in all of your comments. So we can look forward to hearing from you tonight. And that's our agenda. So let's get started. At this time, I entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Floyd County's voting order.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on the proposed amendment to the Floyd County's ordinance. Number two zero one one dash two, with respect to the energy conversion systems and battery energy storage.
A second motion. Have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen and seconded by Kiefer to continue the public hearing on the amendment to the zoning ordinance regarding wind energy. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone who hasn't spoken has three minutes that they can speak. Or we're going to start reading some of the emails that we've been sent to the, so sent to the board. So if anyone would like to speak, if you haven't spoken at the last meeting, welcome. Go to the microphone here, introduce yourself, and you have three minutes to talk. So.
Yeah, I'm Jack Ruska. I'm Jack Ruska. Does it come through? It don't work? Maybe I didn't turn it on.
I had that same problem last time.
At the very bottom.
I think it's on the bottom.
At the very bottom.
Oh, it's on the bottom. Anybody hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm Jack Ruska, John Jack. And I farm three miles south of the fairgrounds and two miles west. Right by the old elevator. And I personally want to say that I'm not against windmills. And my, I, I'm eighty-four years old. And I have a son and a grandson, a grandson that's here to farm, a son that is farming. And they're going to make the decision and I'll go with what they want to say, what they want to do. And they're not against windmills. I think they'll probably do this. But if I'm this old and they're talking about starting to generate power in twenty-seven, I probably might not be here to see that. But I, I do think that there's things that that should be brought to the attention. And I've not made any of the other meetings. There was conflicts. Laura, I was in Washington DC at a grandson's graduation for ten days and just one and, yeah, well, there was already something. But anyway, there should be more of a conversation between our companies and the people that have it on their land. For one thing, we had a, my son had a beautiful field of beans. The crown was CSR ninety-seven. And they went, the rest of the field went over sixty-five bush in the acre. And when we were cowbying a mile away, we could have easily have switched and pulled over to that field, got those beans out of the way. They could have come in there and what they did was they replaced a gearbox on top because it had caught out. No notice. They came in there with seven semis, tramped everything down, support deals, staples, everything. All the while, we were a mile away. To say that we were upset is beyond upset. That shouldn't happen. Also, the mountain pack. When they grow such a crane up, they go in there and they let them just fall out and they pack the hell out of it and they put these big oak pans in there and they drive on that thing. And then they give you two years that they're going to fix that. Well, that does not happen. It's not two years. And also, if someone wants to talk to me afterwards, if you want a down and go down two hundred fifty street, you'll see three windmills on toward the end there that we bought with the bar. And these, every year there's a dead crop. Every year my dad and my son has an argument with them. Come out and look at it. I'll be in our accounts. Thank you very much. I have a lot more to say to somebody if they want to talk to me afterwards.
Thank you, Jack.
But thank you, Mark. And the rest of you guys.
Thank you.
And gals.
Yes.
Are we ready?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Um, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, for people allowing us to speak what we think. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for all your hard work on the wind ordinance. It took many hours to do that and time that they volunteered and to put together what they thought was the best report, aided by assistance from other people. I don't think we should just ignore that. I'm in favor of passing wind ordinance, as stated. I'm in favor of the wind energy. We're a small farm. We're trying to make a living too. So.
Thanks.
And excuse me, your personate.
Oh, sorry. Lori Hay, twenty-four fifty-one Underwood Avenue.
Thank you.
South of Charles City.
Hi, Board. My name's Joe Lockett. I'm a, I'm a land. This up a little bit. You hear me? My name's Joe Lockett. I'm a land agent and I contract with the Energy. Done a lot of the work in this county here. I appreciate the time to speak with you today publicly. I've had many conversations at a lot of kitchen tables with a lot of people I see here. Conversations where I've spent several hours sharing info, having our information scrutinized. And in many cases, about every case scrutinized through attorney review as well and also answering questions. So given my time with three minutes, I'd like to share a considerably dense version of the common threads of that with you here and all of you here today. One of the things we talk about a lot is cost and subsidy. So this right here is a report for a levelized cost of energy through all spectrums of, of energy. Right? So fossil fuels, natural gas, everything, wind, solar. So right now, and you can read this for yourself, I'll give it to you. Solar, or excuse me, wind is the cheapest way that we produce energy right now. Plain and simple, subsidized or unsubsidized. Wind, uh, wind energy is, uh, excuse me, sorry, something, something I, you already know is that subsidies exist to encourage investment in certain markets, especially those that require large amounts of investment dollars. Right? So this is not unique to wind turbines. This is everything in the energy spectrum. Everything is subsidized. I just want to make sure that's understood. So, uh, right? So that's done so that we can deliver energy across the spectrum portably to all Americans. This is the same thing. So birds is another one. Here's a U.S. Fish and Wildlife study for birds. Right? If you read this, actually, this one's particularly interesting. It emphasizes bird collision deaths based on human intervention in nature. Right? So turbines can be, expect to be a big game here. So, so towards the end, I always flip through it when I miss it. Anyway, what you'll find in here is that bird deaths, uh, bird mortality rates based on turbines alone account for less than one, one hundredth of a percent bird deaths. We're not including anything, any other way that birds die. We're talking about collisions. A big one here, probably popular, uh, is infrasound. So this is a study on infrasound right here. So there, I had several of these to pick from. I chose this one because it's done specifically with turbines. And talks about other sources here, but you can get a good look at turbines specifically. So, all right, so this study concludes that infrasound is prevalent in urban and coastal communities at similar levels to the level of infrasound measured close to a wind turbine. By close, right? If you read this in the results of this study, we mean by less than three hundred feet away from the turbine. Another broader study suggests that riding in cars exposes passengers to infrasounds at up to a hundred and twenty decibels, riding a car down the highway. My point being that infrasound is part of our everyday life. It is part of ambient sound and it is everywhere. It's not unique to turbines. The wind itself produces infrasonic waves. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Albrecht. I'm from Iowa. Can you hear me? Um, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to examine and update the ordinance and allow input from the citizens on this important manner of commercial wind energy development in Floyd County. And number one, foremost, I am in favor of the wind energy development within the county and approve of the recommendations to update the current ordinance as presented. This will enable the landowner to diversify income opportunities. Commercial wind energy development will not only benefit the landowners, but increase the tax revenue for the county. This tax revenue will boost income resources for use in the county. Please keep in mind that once in operation, wind energy production is a powerful source for clean energy with no carbon emissions. And maybe we remember that change isn't inevitable and nothing stays the same. Here's hoping we can embrace a positive adventure for the good of Floyd County. And I know there's comments that farmers are just chasing the dollar. Well, I hope the county is chasing this opportunity too. And there's lots of literature out. I did go to the website and I thank Floyd County for all the information that's on there. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Nancy.
I can't hear you. Twenty-four fifty-one Underwood Avenue. I'm in favor of the deal. And I think the community did a real good job on the orange ones. Pass it, do naked income. And I know they bring, these guys come into work, they give us both contractors money. Cause I went in, other windmills went up. I went in and put styrofoam around four other homes there. Trailer house. And then they hired me to take it back out and they paid with the trails and everything. I was really happy. They didn't question my money. So I think if the guys come in, they need help from the local ones, they hire us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Our creator, twenty-one forty-one one thirty of North Floyd. I'm not for the windmills myself. I don't want them around my place. I just hope the Board Supervisors take serious consideration on some changes, some things before this thing all goes through, if it does go through. I also have fifty-eight additions signed. I'd like to present. Get some. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. There are more petitions?
Fifty-eight.
All right.
Good evening to the board and thank you for hearing me. I am Cindy Tretton and science, and a science teacher with an all class sciences teaching license for grades five through twelve. I'm a lifetime resident of Rockford, Floyd County, Iowa. VSO recently issued curtailment notices asking some area businesses to limit their use of electricity due to shortages and inadequate system. Current energy demands are rising and often exceed supplies. The two thousand twenty-three U.S. Energy Information Administration reports that twenty-two percent of current energy supplies would have to be replaced with alternative sources. The Iowa Farm Bureau echoes this, calling wind energy among the most viable of sources to avoid threats to current standards of living. Proposed wind turbines ensure that those in their proximity will be least affected by power outages since only excess power enters the grid. Most areas' schools have a one-to-one ratio of students to e-devices and internet access is key to education. Many schools have replaced physical textbooks and assignments with digital resources. Unreliable energy and communication will reduce or eliminate many educational opportunities, greatly impacting students with various handicaps, defaulting to inequitable denial of education. Please consider the long-term effect that this generation of students has already faced due to the COVID-nineteen crisis of two thousand twenty. In addition, homes, grocers, medical and emergency services may also be impacted. Efforts to reduce fossil fuel consumption are at a crossroads with unprecedented increasing demand for energy. Harness wind is an ancestral form of power dating back to ancient times. Yet it is a step toward extending our nation's fossil fuels, ensuring local continuous energy for today. In the world of science, form follows function and the beauty of a thing is found in its contribution to the whole. As such, I find the towers beautiful. Ventura, Iowa was one of the first communities in this area to erect windmills. I used to drive with my kids just to look at them. One of the last things we did with granddad before he passed away was to go for a scenic drive. He wanted to experience Clear Lake one last time, requesting that we go through the Ventura area to get there because he wanted to see the windmills on what proved to be his last outing. Considering all that has been presented, I respectfully ask the Board to adopt all recommendations presented by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Opposing recommendations weaken and all but eliminate wind turbine projects in Floyd County, resulting in reduced energy availability and placing our residents at the mercy of state and federal policies. Please accept the current and unanimously approved Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations without further delay. A lost opportunity now may be lost forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hello, I'm Georgina Metter. I do live in Floyd County, in Nashville, Charles City. I just want to say I am for the windmills. We have been wanting windmill on our property when they first start popping up in Charles City. So when we were approached, we were so excited. So I hope this goes through. Black pussy generated by windmills will be used locally and the excess will be sent where needed. It's not going to be sent to Chicago or the East Coast. It's going to be used here first. If we don't need it, it will move on. The wind energy helps us not to be dependent on foreign energy. You know, this is a clean energy I want in my backyard. I think they're beautiful. Love to keep them. And as far as tax benefits, the benefits to a reasonable ordinance speak for themselves. Everyone in the county will benefit. The study from the Center of Rural Affairs looks at county ordinances that have wind farms. Marshall County was one of these. For Marshall, the study concludes that without its turbine facility, the levy on taxpayers would have increased twenty-two point seven percent to maintain the same amount of revenue. I hope that Floyd County picks very kind of prosperity as well. Thanks for speaking.
Thank you very much, Georgia.
My name is Christie Weyer. I live north of Charles City. I'm a landlord in Floyd County. I have attended most of the meetings on the windmill issues. I've listened to both sides speak. People who want one should be able to put one on their land. And if you don't want one, then I respect it. And I support to adopt the ordinance of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And nobody is trying to disrespect either party. Times are changing and we have to think about our future in this county for alternative energy. The tax money that would be coming in each year and the years to come. Where are we going to go for more of a clean power source than the windmills? We all listen to the grow noise that has a higher sound level than these windmills. I listen to it every day. There'll be setback limits on the distance restrictions for people's homes. We just need to move forward in a positive direction.
Thank you very much, Chrissy.
Everyone, my name is Thomas Bean. I'm with the Iowa Land and Liberty Coalition. I believe I've spoken with you before and my colleague as well. We are from West Des Moines. Sixteen forty-nine South steamboat street, West Des Moines. Just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. We work across the state with several different counties. I understand it takes a lot of time and thought to come together a good ordinance. And I think that's what this is. Planning and zoning board moving it forward with unanimous vote now sitting in front of you here tonight. These opportunities come along and it benefits everyone, both the local landowners who have the opportunity to choose whether or not to have this on their land and provides a benefit to them economically. Brides a benefit, as you've heard, the county is a tax base that can help from rising or raising property taxes. Actually, no, no one wants to see that. Helps fund schools, infrastructure, et cetera. That's also great for the state. Iowa has a, they punch above our weight for renewable energy. About sixty percent of our energy produced here in Iowa is wind. It is a key part of keeping our rates low on the national average compared to a lot of our states around here Midwest. So I would just encourage you to pass this ordinance as written, as it is work ordinance, has setbacks that will protect landowners. It's well-written ordinance protects the county from anything liability-wise. So I would ask you to move this forward here tonight at your reading. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. While we're waiting for some other comments, I'd just like to recognize a couple of people who have joined us. We've been joined by State Representative Charlie Thompson and State Senator Sandy Selman, who are both here in attendance tonight. They both serve parts of Floyd County and represent us in the Iowa Legends chapter. Are there other comments anyone would like to make from the podium at this time, or I'll start reading some of the things that have been presented?
I'm Ray Stonecypher. I live in North Floyd, ten fifty-two River Road. I have signed a petition against this ordinance. And my main reason is I, I, my tenant, my two tenants that I have on farm, I told them I, we will never have to farm around where? Windmills. My, my farm is pattern tile. I do not want that big hundred-ton crane running around my farm anywhere. I can't imagine what it would do. I, I wasn't too hip on this deal, against it. But last meeting, it was made aware that these windmill fiberglass blades have a tendency to shed fiberglass. And that is a terrible, terrible stuff. My main reason is where I live, I am east of some of the area that is quite evident that they want to build windmills. And where I, ten years ago, I, I was approached by the state about building a trip program, lake, eleven acre lake on my farm. And so we, we did it one hit and we built it. But the dargon thing don't hold water. And my fear is all this water coming from the west, which I'm on the east side of it, that would have his fiberglass in it. It comes by, by the, my crap leak by a sixteen-inch tile as well as a twelve-inch tile. And in an open ditch and the darn thing doesn't hold water. The state three times, twice, have put in ground cement, tried to fix the leak and it's failed bolt every time. Last year, I asked them again, what are we going to do? Well, they, they, they won't do nothing anymore. And so I, I went ahead and put in thirty-ton of three-inch rock in this hole. This hole that is created by this, this leak is about twenty foot in diameter and about twenty foot deep. And we know where that water goes after it gets, it goes down in your well and my well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Red. All right, I'm going to start reading some comments here. This one, yes? Oh, excuse me. What's, oh. Thanks. All right, I'm going to start reading some email comments that we have here. And the first one I have is from Denny and Kim Beggeman. I hope, we hope this email finds you well. We are writing to express our p approval of the wind ordinance amendment. It is our belief that the wind turbines will increase the supply of energy to the growing population. We understand it may not support our community at this time. But with the fast growth of population, it will only be a matter of time before it is needed. There are many other positives will come from the turbines. Energy, revenue to the landowners, revenue to the community. Thank you, Denny and Kim Beggeman. This email is from Anna Blickenderfer. Dear Board of Supervisors, wind turbines are popping up across the country with increased frequency and promoted as green energy. Unfortunately, they are anything but. Over six hundred yards of concrete and rebar going into the ground that will take centuries to break down. Thousands of birds have been killed by these monstrosities. Fiberglass and epoxy are not recyclable. Digging a hole in Wyoming to bury blades is not green. We are sacrificing our land, our unobstructed views for other people to make money off of us. And while I may not have to worry about them in my immediate surrounding area as I live close to the airport, my friends and family will suffer if these continue to go up. I also don't agree with my taxpayers paying to subsidize turbine project. Remember when Ethel said, what's that sound in Christmas Vacation? That was a squirrel. But now the answer is a wind turbine in your peaceful farm life. Say no more wind turbines. Say no to more wind turbines in Floyd County and across the United States. Anna Blickenderfer, longtime Floyd County resident. This one is from Auditor Glory Carr. Here's Supervisor Mark Keown, Supervisor Dennis Kiefer, and Supervisor Jim Jorgensen. On a personal level, I have been a Floyd County resident all my life, raised on a farm, am a farm girl at heart. My parents still own two farms in St. Charles Township, a mile north of where I lived most of my childhood. Two mid-American energy turbines stand on each eighty-acre field in a section with six other turbines. Two on Youngerman's property and four on Fluor's property. The hundred and sixty acres owned by my parents is cash rented out by tenants who have had no issue with the turbines and have welcomed the driveway for loading and hauling grain. In the early nineteen eighties, my parents purchased a farm in Floyd Township when I was in high school. Shortly thereafter, they were caught up in high interest rates of the eighty and sold off several acres of that farm in order to avoid bankruptcy. This was tough times for my family. In those later years, when the fifty turbine project came along, they welcomed the opportunity of renewable energy and revenue source they brought with it. I have always had a passion for turbine. I love the one that stood out on our old farm. I have a small replica of an old-fashioned blades displayed in my house, but I I have a small replica of an old-fashioned blades displayed in my house that I love to look at. Old or new turbines, I believe they soar majestically and are not a blight on the horizon. On a professional level, House File seven eighteen passed last year with a message to local government that people are tired of paying taxes. Cities, schools, and counties are held to a limited growth and a cap on tax dollars to collect. This is going to hit the, those specific taxing entities hard for the next five years. City councils, school boards, and county supervisors are going to have tough decisions to make on cutting services with the new budget limitation. In two thousand nine, the Board of Supervisors established an urban renewable, urban renewal area ahead of the Mid-American Energy Project. By ordinance, a taxable portion of the turbine locations was set, and because there were no turbines yet erected, a zero-dollar frozen base was established with the turbines on the land. This offered the property value above the base, the increment, to be used to cover debt payment for various road projects. The only taxpayer on that increment value is Mid-American Energy. The surrounding property lost no taxable value. The county was able to fund over six million dollars in welcome road projects solely in the unincorporated area. When the debt is paid off, all of that tax revenue goes back to the levy entity. Had the timing been differed for the current communications tower project, a similar scenario with using tax increment financing could have played out for that project. Taxpayers of the county are likely going to have a ballot issue in the November election for a new tax levy to support emergency medical services. Charles City and Floyd County entered into a three-year contract with AMR Ambulance effective in fiscal year twenty-four for four hundred thousand and three percent increase periods two and three. This new contract came with a two hundred thousand dollar increase from the prior contract. We don't know what the next contract will be, but no doubt it will come in with another increase. There's talk of establishing a municipal ambulance service that also comes with a high price tag. Revenue from the wind turbines, whether it be from a urban renewable area slash tax increment financing source or new construction taxable growth, would go a long way on supporting essential services in our county. Summary, we've read comments that have been much longer than three minutes, so. All right, we will dispense with the summary and hold us strictly to that three-minute rule. All right. We, we have. You're in order when you're recognized, so thank you if you want to seek the floor. Next. Ruby Crow. Where's Ruby's? There it is.
Kathy Carter's never got.
Okay.
Read the last.
All right. This email is from Kathy Carter. Jennifer?
Yeah.
Start the crime clock, so I know, and tell me when you got fifteen and thirty seconds, okay?
Hey, perfect.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gentlemen, as you all likely know, the farm where I grew up and part of which I still own is on the far western side of Floyd County. It lies a mile east of the Saragordo Floyd County line, Xenia Avenue. Coming from the west on the Burchnell Road, you can see the wind turbines near Charles City before even leaving Saragordo County and crossing Xenia. More than twenty miles in the distance. I do not wish to see a veritable forest of turbines located closer. The current mapping places the proposed new erections at five to six miles from the county line. These companies want only our ground and our tax dollars subsidy. Power generated will not be ours to use. The compacted concreted wired soil will also not be ours to use. I don't care how good your neighbor might be, the rest of the residents and travelers in the area have to put up with them with seemingly no choice in the matter. Renewable energy sounds wonderful, but there are always reasons to question just how well a renewable project actually operates and who it affects. With the recent decision of the I U B regarding the Summit Pipeline claiming it is a public benefit in use and allowing them a domain, how long will it be before the turbine and solar companies pursue that argument? Property owners will have no choice left if the proceeds and ordinances may be the one thing that creates some protection. Defined ordinances need to be in place. Kathy Carter, Rockford. Just mention if there's anyone who's listening on the Zoom link that we have, if you'd like to speak at any time and you haven't spoken yet, please let us know and we'll give you three minutes. This letter is sent to Floyd County Supervisors by Ruby Crow. Doesn't say where she's from. It just says her, she's from Power Up Iowa, but it doesn't say her town.
Okay.
On behalf of Power Up Iowa's Floyd County Coalition members, I am writing to you to urge your support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's Wind Energy Systems Amendment. The Floyd County Planning and Zoning Commission has presented to you an amendment that allows for safe and reasonable wind development on private land. If a landowner voluntarily engages with the developer and exercises their right to develop their land in this way, both the landowner and the county win. The landowner in the form of annual lease payments and the county in the form of increased tax revenue. In these days of uncertain economic times, leaving this option on the table for Floyd County residents is the prudent thing for the Board of Supervisors to do. To vote down this amendment to permanently deny residents and taxpayers access to a critical income stream. Power Up Iowa's Floyd County Coalition members, thank you for your efforts in seeking the best practices for wind energy and encourage you to adopt these recommendations. Ruby Crow, Power Up Iowa. The next email is from Robin Fox.
Pardon? That was when it didn't get read the last.
Okay, this one didn't get read the last time. All right. My husband and I moved to a country home for several reasons. Trying to find out if that home's in Floyd County. I don't know. She doesn't say. One reason was to enjoy the wildlife. From our windows and deck, we can see deer, beasts, wild turkeys, and more during the day. At night, we can stand on the deck and see bats flitting close by while they're hunted for insect. Another reason was that my husband was a hunter and a trapper. Hunting and trapping were more than just sport to him. The wild game feeds our family. Anything that would change the population and movements of wildlife in our areas is a practical concern to us. News that a wind turbine project might come to our area concerns me and my neighbors. We have researched the subject. There are many studies on the internet to describe how wind turbines affect wildlife. A study done in two thousand twelve showed an estimated eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand bat and five hundred and seventy-three thousand bird fatalities are caused each year by wind turbines. Since thousands of new turbines are built each year, these numbers may have greatly increased by now. Many other studies show hog fatality numbers, bass and birds are needed to control population of mosquitoes and other insects. This helps keep country life livable for people. Wildlife on the ground can be driven away by the noise of turbines. Animals depend on their hearing for mating and avoiding predators. Their survival depends on it. The vibration from turbines can stress, uh, stress an animal, as shown by medical studies that found elevated levels of cortisol, fecal samples of deer. Stress can interfere with the mating and population number and drive animals, uh, population away by their area. Another concern that my husband had was the life expectancy of large wind turbines. At the end of the working life of a turbine, the cost of maintenance, repair, and removal of the turbine could fall on the property owner and be very expensive, possibly outweighing the extra income from the turbine. A bibliography file is giving the source of information used in this paper. Do wind turbines affect deer hunting? Climate F A. Erickson, W P Wolf. From the abstract, data completed from a hundred and sixteen studies. Who benefit increasing evidence that bats effectively forage at wind turbines from the abstract, bats will be attracted to turbines as foraging resource. And there are another two pages of reference that Ruby used in her comments. Man. All right, fine.
Speaker?
Yes.
Good evening.
Care recognizes Burton Bogey.
Burton Bogey, lifelong resident of twenty-eight sixty-four Hundred and Thirtieth Street. You talk about value-added agriculture. If I want to build a hog building, a chicken building, or a cattle building, I've got to stay twenty-five hundred feet from my nearest neighbor. That rule is set by the D N R. And I think for the windmills to be a good neighbor, they should have the same set. Just because of the wind, the flicker, the noise, and everything else. Also, I think we have to recognize that Kayla started out with a grassroots roundup organization that forwarded a lot of petitions, and that should be well deserved and well deserved by the Board of Supervisors. I'm not against the wind, but do believe to be good neighbors, they should have appropriate setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Next up is John Hayes. Albert Einstein stated, quote, imagination is more important than knowledge, unquote. I am in favor of the wind machines with reasonable restrictions. Iowa is number one in corn, fog, ethanol, and egg production. Iowa is an exporter of fog, ethanol, and egg. Why not add electricity to the list? Reaping the rewards of revenue, they would contribute to the county and state coffers. Why not make Iowa number one in electricity production per capita with the goal of having the lowest electricity rates in the nation? Low energy rates benefit everybody. Dean Jaden commented that the county budget was sixteen million dollars. It was stated that the two proposed wind entities in Western Floyd County could generate about four million dollars in revenue for Floyd County. Twenty-five percent. Imagine if we had enough wind machines in the county to cover the entire budget. Perhaps enough revenue to support county-wide ambulance service. Maybe enough revenue to provide clean, safe drinking water to Kowloon. The possibilities are endless. John Hayes, Tulsa, Iowa. The next comment is from Michael Hill. Dear Floyd County Board of Supervisors, I am writing on behalf, on behalf of Marble Rock Marble Ridge Wind Energy LLC, an affiliate of Invenergy LLC regarding our pending wind energy project in Floyd County and to follow up on concerns expressed in a previous letter about October tenth, two thousand twenty-three to County Attorney Pritchett. Following active participation in the ordinance review process that has transpired over the past few months, we are now growing increasingly concerned about the proposed Wind Energy Ordinance Amendment set for your consideration at the August sixth, twenty twenty-four Board of Supervisors meeting. While currently restricted by a moratorium, we believe the existing Wind Energy Ordinance provides reasonable siting requirements and facilitates construction of wind project in Floyd County. However, since board determination that an amendment to the Wind Energy Ordinance was necessary in retention of the North Iowa Area Council of Governments to ensure drafting of a fair and comprehensive amendment, Marble Ridge has remained supportive, active, engaged participants in the review process, which has included several meetings, including educated workshops, educational workshops, public comment periods, and bringing in zoning administrators from surrounding counties to discuss their ordinances. Through this process, the county has drafted a comprehensive ordinance amendment that both protects landlord rights and allows for reasonable and responsive wind energy development. It strikes a balance that could enable a project to proceed and contribute to Floyd County's healthy economy. Following this thorough, inclusive, and comprehensive process on June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission overwhelmingly approved, recommended a five-zero unanimous vote that amendment be adopted. This unanimously approved amendment is a proposal up for your consideration at the August sixth meeting. Following the unanimous recommendation for approval, we are now surprised and concerned the Board of Supervisors is considering significant changes that would undermine the recommendation of the P and Z that would potentially restrict wind development in Floyd County. Marble Ridge first began working with local landowners in two thousand twenty-one. Since that time, we have obtained voluntary easement agreements from seventy-nine individual Floyd County landowners covering fifteen thousand nine hundred acres of land. Continuing the work referenced in our previous letter, Marble Ridge has now invested over five million dollars in Floyd County by conducting studies, measuring the wind, paying landowners, and pursuing grid interconnection, including a substantial amount of funds posted on interconnection security that are at risk. All the planning, engineering, and substantial investment in the project has been conducted in reliance on the current favorable state of the law in Floyd County. During construction, the project will create approximately three jobs in the region. Thank you, Michael. Hold on a second. Thank you. As you keep it. Mason Colby. To the supervisor of Floyd County. I know that the meeting will be long enough, so I will brief. I would like you to use the distances that are stated in the petition they have received from the residents of Floyd County. I know there are some that feel they are too restrictive, however, they generally do not have our best interests in mind. Most of the absentee landowners, most are absentee landowners, and the others are the wind turbine company employees or lobbyists. Some individuals at the last meeting were solely in favor because of a possible tax revenue from wind turbines. He spoke of the population of Floyd County on the decrease. Our taxes will not decrease like our energy bills. They will only increase as matter what the future brings. The cost of living never goes down, only increases. We can only slow the process. Unfortunately, wind turbines decrease our property values and will also push current residents from staying here and deter new residents from the area. I strongly ask for you to make good common sense rules to protect us rural residents from absentee landowners and the opportunistic companies that have no intention of making the area world a better place for our children, grandchildren, and future generation. We, the people, should not have to subsidize our own demise. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mason Colby. All right, this email is from Sarah Lacoste. Wayne and Sarah Lacoste of Rutt. We don't think the county needs any more wind turbines, solar farms, or a pipeline. When you watch the sunrise or sunset, who wanted to see wind turbines in your view? People go on vacation to see beautiful places and do fun things. Some of the most beautiful sights are right here in our county from our own front porches. Why would we want to ruin that? What kind of quality of life do people have living next to wind turbines or a solar farm? The sounds, shadows, and light flickers, not to mention the birds and wildlife that are close to the wetland areas or C I P areas that would have wind turbines or possible solar farms near them. These wind farms will profit a handful of people and destroy the land and views of thousands of local residents in our county. We have some of the best farmland around the state. Why would we want to destroy it and put it out of production for fifty to ninety years? What will this do to the property values of homes near the turbines or solar farm? Where in the county will you be able to build new homes for commercial businesses? If the county is full of wind turbines, will new businesses be pushed out or go to another county and build? Where will old parts be recycled? In our landfill, they don't biodegrade. What happens when they catch on fire? Is the county equipped to handle this? Homes, building, and crops will be endangered. What will happen to our hard surface and gravel roads? The county will spend more taxpayer money to fix them and try to keep them in shape with all the truck traffic installing them. Why would we want either the wind turbines or solar farms in our county when the residents of this county won't even be able to use the energy from them? They should build them on land that isn't good for crop production. I thought the farmer's slogan is, we feed America. How can the farmer do that when the land is being used for things other than farming and producing food? Please stop the wind turbines, solar farms, and pipelines from changing our landscape in Floyd County. Wayne and Sarah Lacoste. But, uh. Um, this one is from Isaac Lapa. Dear Chairman Keown and Supervisor Jorgensen and Kiefer. Thank you for your service and for your dedication to Floyd County and its citizens. I am speaking for the seventy nine individual landowners across Floyd County who have signed onto Invenergy's proposed Marble Ridge Wind Project. I wanted to provide you with an insight on the private conversations I have with many Floyd County residents for the past three years. Signing up for our wind project demonstrates a massive commitment from each individual landowner and their families, which likely took months of sitting around kitchen tables discussing with family how to build their family's futures and entering into attorney review to review easement agreements. Putting their signatures down on easement agreements to be a participant in our project is no small commitment, and they have thought very carefully about the decision. Several of our participating landowners are intimidated by public pressure at the convenience and do not wish to speak. Yet participating in this project, what they feel is the right thing to do is to keep their family enterprises and farms in a better situation than yesterday. We ask you to protect their rights to farm as they see fit on their own land. Through this amendment process, the county has drafted a comprehensive ordinance amendment that both protects landlord rights and allows for reasonable and responsible wind energy development. In order to ensure the board is drafting a fair and comprehensive amendment to the wind energy ordinance, the board retained North Iowa Area Council of Government. This process has included several meetings, including educational workshops, public comment periods, and bringing in zoning administrators from surrounding counties to discuss their ordinances. On June twenty six, two thousand and twenty four, the Biden and Zoning Commission recommended the amendment be adopted by a five zero unanimous vote. And we ask you that you affirm the current amendment is drafted without unreasonable changes. Please see this article below, which correctly divulged the study referenced last Monday on microplastic. Wind turbine blade coating is not toxic and does not account for large or any emissions of B P A on microplastic. Regarding land use, the neighboring energy developed project, Chickasaw Wind Energy Center, which is north of New Hampton, averaged zero point six acres to turbine slash access road combined. This project, that's going to be about forty turbine, which would mean only twenty four acres of land used taken out of production. However, these twenty four acres will be some of the most productive from a dollar per acre standpoint for the landowner. Peer reviews, scientific research has found no correlation of health effects in wind energy. Furthermore, noise levels produced by wind turbines at infrasonic frequency are imperceptible to humans and less than those experienced riding their car. The American Energy Company has the fifth lowest energy prices in the USA mainly because their main energy source, generation source is wind energy. Invenergy completes geotechnical studies to properly cite turbines. All right, thank you, Isaac. Tim Lobby. Um, gentlemen. I am submitting these email comments as a supplement to my wife's verbal comments at the meet Monday, seven twenty six, twenty four, public hearing. As she focused mainly on the economic impact on small family farms and the tax base of the county at that time, I will focus on two other issues in this email. One, the ever increasing need for energy in current future legislation. It will impact energy and electricity as we know it. In April, my wife was fortunate to be able to attend an economic development training conference. This conference was attended by professionals who came from all parts of the United States. The Iowa contingent was questioned as to what the situation was with available power and how will we handle any challenges. One economic development professional professional replied that thankfully neither shortage of available power nor rolling brownouts or blackouts was a problem in Iowa at this time. We're here in the Midwest, or for the time being, that we don't have this issue that most other areas of the country do have. However, I feel with the demand for electricity are increasing every day. It won't take long for this to become something that we pay. Some articles in the recent Butler County R E C magazine seem to share my concern and stress the need to include green energy, including wind energy, in our energy toolkit. I have attached these articles to my email. Two, other communities are blending, benefiting from the development of wind energy farm. I'm also attaching a July sixth Wall Street Journal article showing how one of our fellow Midwestern communities, Morris, Minnesota, is embracing wind energy and flourishing. Three, at the hearing last week, there were some concerns that I had not heard and were concerning. And so I researched a bit. The positive and negative side of internet research is that you can generally find studies, articles to score whatever side of whatever argument you want. Fiber glass thread is one of those topics. While there were articles shouting the dangers of this in the rooftops, there are also other articles that convincingly pointed to this really not being a danger. If it did occur, it was on a relatively small scale, much smaller than the other environmental pollutions that benefits far out for depression. I am not a scientist or an expert. However, it would seem to me that it should be possible to do soil water testing on the existing wind turbine area in Floyd County and also perhaps add to periodic testing of the wind companies' expense to monitor and handle that shared portion that it exists. In closing, I maintain that these wind farms projects, which rely on voluntary participation from county landowners, earn the best interest of the county for economic and energy supply reasons. I would encourage the Board of Supervisors to adopt a reasonable ordinance that both protects Floyd County citizens and allows the projects to go forward to ensure the county can effectively function financially. Interested parties can participate and benefit and that we ensure that our energy supply remains available when we need it. I firmly believe. Thank you, Tim Lobby. All right, this is, uh, the written remarks of Doug Lindeman from Chelsea, Iowa. Traditional farming includes wind towers. The Floyd County Supervisors met at the fairgrounds on July twenty ninth to decide the minimal distance requirements on wind towers and solar panels for ag land. For generations, farmers have used wind to drive well pumps, dry crop, limit fungal disease, and enhance pollination. Likewise, sunlight has been a critical component for growth of corn, beans, and hay by photosynthesis. Wind and solar resources are fundamental to farming. Only the farmer should determine the use and placement of harvesting equipment. Example, type of tractor, type of ag building, or type of energy device. The county lacks zoning authority over farming, see Iowa code three three five point two. Farmers are entering an economic period where grain prices are well below breakdancing. John there has been laying off hundreds of workers in response to economic stagnation in grain farming. In the past, farmers face economic downturns by, one, piling on the ground, two, replacing horses with tractors, three, incorporating mixed chemicals and new seed genetics, and four, expanded livestock ability to capture and apply nitrogen in the farm field. Farmers invested in ethanol plants and sold corn to those plants. These new economic activities propelled farmers into the twenty first century without county regulation. Now, farmers can diversify their farming operation with grain, livestock, or kilowatt production to remain competitive. Iowa's agricultural land is out of numerous energy production devices. Many livestock buildings sit beside solar panels for electricity. Numerous wind towers provide monetary payments to farm owners. Today, energy devices are a fundamental part of the farming industry. Electrical production, wind or solar, provides needed economic security to family farms. These devices provide ag owner, land ownership, for market fluctuation in grain and livestock. In addition, these farming devices provide long-term employment and provide property tax funds for lowering the tax burden on other taxpayers. Formerly, agriculture used wind and solar for only six months of crop production. Today, energy devices use wind and solar for twelve months. Energy equipment efficiently harvests the field farm, wind, and solar resources. We want farmers to be cost effective in the twenty first century. Ag lands are manufacturing slash industrial sites for grain, meat, and kilowatts. The ag industry creates smells, pollen dust, and related interferences for its neighbor. This is normal and to be expected. The Floyd County Supervisors need to move out of the horse's buggy thinking and embrace farmers who have harvested wind and solar resources. It is irrelevant who owns the device. The farmer and his family benefits from long-term energy leases pertaining to a renewable ag resource, wind, or solar. It makes agriculture a more sustainable activity. Consequently, setback limitations should be set at one and one stack by the height of the wind tower. Oh, thank you. Okay, Victory McBusk. All right. As a citizen of Floyd County for almost my entire life and a former local business owner, I contemplated both sides of the proposal to add more wind turbines to Floyd County landscape. On the business side of it, bringing in additional tax dollars to help the budget, the addition of jobs and spike in the economy short term all sound great. It would allow for improvements to be made in official spending within the community. However, from a landowner and resident viewpoint, the current proposal does not support the citizens of Floyd County, only the big businesses of the wind companies who do not have to live in the communities for which they want to impact for generations. When I brought my acreage in Rudd in the early nineteen nineties, I was met with many land restrictions on how I was to use the land I had just bought. I couldn't build a hog confinement or have more than a certain number of cattle on my land. I was perplexed. How could someone else tell me what I could and could not do with my own land? My intentions were not to have a livestock farm, but I was still taken back by the restrictions imposed on me for the greater good of the neighbors. In the end, I was glad the restrictions were imposed because I have been able to enjoy our land season after season without the smell of livestock until recent years, when restrictions changed. I was not made aware of the code changes that allowed these hog confinement to be built so close to our land. But the owners of these confinement have gone to great lengths to a minimal impact to our great neighborhood and reduce the smell. However, I do not want to sit back and be uninformed and let the same thing happen with these wind turbines. When the research I've done on the impact wind turbines have on the land and environment, both short term and long term, I'm appalled. The zoning board unanimously, with the dissenting opinion of one member, approved these additional wind turbines to be built in Floyd County without doing their own due diligence to understand the uniqueness of Floyd County offers in the terms of topography. As Derek Straub and Terry Dean brought before the board last week, Floyd County has a very karst topography. I'm including a map of the karst topography layered in current wind farms in Iowa in this email. As you can see, we've exhausted areas in Floyd County where the karst farms are not as prominent. A similar topography was found in the Sandusky, York, Seneca, and other surrounding counties in Ohio during the Republic Wind Farm Project in two thousand and twenty one. Ohio's Power and Siding Board denied the wind farm due to environmental impact disturbance caused turning down over four hundred million in tax revenue. Definitely a hard pill to swallow, but the counties are still surviving and thriving today. Looking out over the fields near my house, when we receive rain, the fields filled with water from underground karst. If we disrupt these tunnels and fill in the gaps with sinkhole mitigations, these skills could become farmable and potentially lead to the flooding of my house, the flooding of my house. All right. Kayla and Patrick McGurges. Um, Dear Board of Supervisors, we live on some of the best ground in the world. My husband and I are farmers. We want to farm. Building more wind turbines actually costs more than the revenue it brings in. Each turbine will create waste, pollution, and noise. The soil is disturbed and replaced with more than six hundred yards of concrete. The concrete will never be fully removed. By the way, concrete industry alone emits over nine percent of the world's carbon dioxide. Fabrical glass and oil will pollute our ground and water. Wells will likely fail and need to be re-drilled or deepened due to our karst topography. Quality ground will be removed from farming production. Expenses for aerial application will increase for those of us who apply fungicide and cover crops, even if we do not receive payment for a turbine. Easements and contracts limit what can be built on the ground, limiting tax revenue and local economic development. Livestock breeding and feed consumption can significantly decrease, costing other local farmers profit. Conservation areas will no longer serve as escape from industry. Please increase setback distances to twenty five hundred feet or more from dwellings, outbuildings, and livestock facilities. Please limit the number of total turbines that can be placed in Floyd County so that we can limit companies from continually coming to Floyd County. Finally, please protect the conservation areas, hunting, and migratory birds that the past generations have worked so hard to protect. Please follow the expert recommendation to D and R Wildlife Biologist to set the standard moving forward. We need one mile setback in conservation areas, half mile setback for any tract of land containing forty acres of contiguous woodlands or prairies. Decisions made tonight are essential to the health, safety, and quality of life for all Floyd County residents. Please consider and enact above requests to keep Floyd County an enjoyable place to call home. Sincerely, Patrick and Kayla McGurges.
That was a handout from the U S, believe.
Okay. Thank you, Kayla and Patrick. All right. Don't start to fuck you up. Dear Mr. Keown. Thank you for the opportunity to let us address our concerns over proposed Marble Ridge Farm. We urge you to consider some of our questions and concern. We have chosen to live in Rofford County. We have lived on our acreage for the past thirty seven years. Despite some negatives, there are more positives than negatives that keep us on our acreage. We appreciate the quiet. There is great beauty to see from our vantage point, and we like being close to nature. It has served both of us greatly to learn of the proposed wind farm. Potentially, we could be surrounded by six hundred to seven hundred foot tall ugly wind turbines, which will not only make one noise, but will run, ruin our beautiful view. Plus, there are the red lights blinking throughout the night that potentially will be very disturbing. We are taxpayers, as are our neighbors, but good neighbors don't do things to hurt others. Our acreage is not big enough to boast one of these wind turbines, which we would not do anyway. Yet our neighbors will be allowed to have them on their property less than a quarter mile away from our house if recommendations from the zoning board are accepted. The zoning board recommended reducing setbacks from fifteen hundred to twelve hundred feet. How is this fair to us? Many landowners won't have to hear or see the wind turbines because they don't live on places of land near us that are potential sites. In Butler County, Iowa, the safety purposely setback have been increased to sixteen hundred and forty feet participants in wind farms and eighteen hundred feet for non-participants. This contrasts with the recommendations from our zoning board, which decrease setbacks to twelve hundred feet for affected property owners. This is not far enough, especially since these turbines will be so tall at six hundred, seven hundred feet. As seen from the May twenty twenty four tornado, which hit Greenfield, Iowa, these towers can fall over. Flying debris would certainly be an issue, and twelve hundred feet from a house is not far enough for such a disaster. There was a farmer from another county who spoke at the June twenty six, two thousand and twenty four zoning board meeting. He stated that he thought wind turbines were great because he has two of them on his farm. He plans on passing them to his two children, one for each. If he wants wind turbines on his land and wants to live there, that's his prerogative. We want to pass the value of our acreage to our children and grandchildren someday, but if the value of our acres decreases because of a wind farm, how is that fair? Who would want to purchase an acreage and live less than one quarter of a mile from a wind turbine? Very few people. We need, we will not benefit from federal tax credits that our neighbors will be collecting. In fact, the value of our acreage most likely will go down. A December 2023 government study of over half a million properties near wind farms showed that for homes within one mile of a wind project compared to homes three to five miles away, we found an average production and home sale price of approximately 11%. We. Thank you, Steve and Anne. Well, here's another one. This is Anne Murphill. Is that the same name? Oh, Anne Murphill, excuse me. All right. To the Floyd County Board of Supervisors. I'm writing to support of wind energy. My parents own land west of Charles City. They're part of the wind farm, and with the satisfaction of their involvement in that project, have signed an easement on land they own and live on in the Inver energy development area. I grew up on our family farm near Roseville in Floyd County. The old mechanical windmills were becoming obsolete, but I vividly remember seeing and hearing a few remaining windmills still pumping water for people and livestock. Along with a barn and silo, modern windmills generating much-needed electricity are depicted in the upper right-hand corner of our Iowa license plate. Windmills have been a proud part of the rural landscape for many generations. Thank you, Anne Murphill of Clear Lake. John Murphill. To the Floyd County Board of Supervisors. As a supporter of wind energy, I respectfully encourage you to approve the Floyd County Finance and Zoning Commissioner's Amendment to the utility-scale wind ordinance as recommended in its 5-0 unanimous vote on June 26, 2024. The P&amp;Z Commissioners brought a cross-section of viewpoints to the table and are to be commended coming together and crafting an amendment that is sensible compromise of ideas and a reasonable concession to wind energy opponent. The setback requirements in the current ordinance have served us well in Mid-American Energy's Charles City Wind Park since April of 2008. Based on the success, the substantial increases in setbacks recommended by the P&amp;Z are more than adequate. I live in the development area of Energy's Marble Ridge Wind Energy Center and welcome the construction of turbines near my home that meets the proposed setback distance of more than a quarter mile, specifically 1,500 feet or 2.25 times turbine height, whichever is graded greater. I believe this comprehensive amendment to the utility-scale wind ordinance that presented unanimously by our planning and zoning commissioners will safely promote the efficient expansion of wind energy in Floyd County. Thank you, John Murphill Rossley. This one is four pages long. To the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to comment at tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to recognize the hard work and thoughtfulness of the planning and zoning commissioners in the development of their recommendations to you. Many of us here were a part of that long process. I would also like to add that there is a diverse set of opinions regarding wind turbines. I am respectful of those buried opinions, even if I happen to disagree with some of them. It is unlikely that many of us in this room will change our opinions as a result of this meeting. For instance, there are some present present tonight that have stated they do not like the way wind turbines look. I happen to disagree. I like the way they look, and I like the way they sound. As a mechanical engineer, I found them fascinating marvels of engineering. However, our opinions are just that, opinion. It is facts and data that should provide you with the basis for forming your decisions when considering revisions to the county's wind ordinance. We are in the perfect storm of a true energy crisis like we have never seen in our history. Our energy supply is in peril. Just this past Friday, 25 states sent an emergency appeal to the Supreme Court, asking it to immediately halt an executive mandate that they say threatens to shutter the country's remaining fleet of coal-fired power plants. Attorneys argue that if the current administration's rule is allowed to continue, it will mean that hundreds of megawatts are forced offline, leading to power shortages during critical weather during the summer and winter. Among other things, the rule imposes inadequately demonstrated technologies on unworkable timeframes, effectively squeezing plants into retirement, if he'll sit. The rule would force 90% of carbon dioxide from the plants to be captured and stored by 2032, and 40% of the plants to establish coal-fired natural gas by 2030. On the demand side, there is a new customer in our state. Digital high-tech companies like Meta and Amazon are not only new customers, but their consumption of electricity is dwarfing that of other industries. I recently learned that Meta's data center in the Des Moines area has over 265 backup generators, with each generator 2-megawatt size range. That's 530 megawatts capacity. To put this in perspective, the current Mid-American Wind Farm produces 75 megawatt, which represents only 14% of Meta's Des Moines site backup power needed. One site, one customer. Meta is now the state's single largest consumer of electricity, but a company who I respectfully shall not name. I find it ironic, Facebook, a primary tool, the opponents of wind energy have used to attract so many followers, is fueled by wind energy. On the vehicle side, there's a push to rid the roadway of gas and diesel-powered cars, replacing them with electric vehicles, and it doesn't end there. We now have the option of electric motors, electric turbines, electric bicycles. There we go. John McBusk. Okay. Dear Board of Supervisors. I'm a landowner of Floyd County. I'm writing to ask you to support the ability to win for Floyd County. Respectfully, Sean. Good evening. I would ask that you, as you consider requirements included in the proposed winter ordinance, that you think deeply about Floyd County. Floyd County is an agricultural county with many individuals taking great pride in the production of corn, beans, beef, pork, et cetera. It is also a destination for many visitors to come to visit Cherry Chapman's Witten Cat House, the Charles City Whitewater Port, and many county conservation areas, ampian river accesses, hunting their fossil tongue. Although the proposed proposal of wind turbines seems like a great way to promote natural resources for the production of energy, it does cost a cost. A cost that the citizens of Floyd County will pay. Cost of the lost productive ag land where the wind turbines will sit. The cost of the view across the open fields that will be littered with wind turbines. The cost will be the sound of the turbine while trying to hike the conservation area. This cost will also be an effect on our water, soil, and water resources as the wind turbine blades release the fiberglass into the environment. What legacy are we leaving for the next generation? Much of these costs can be prevented by having strict guidelines in the ordinance. I would hope that a setback difference from a house would be equally important as a setback difference from a building, housing livestock, or the natural resource area that houses the wildlife many individuals hunt and feed their families. That distance should be at least one mile. I would also add, we include the Iowa Department of Natural Resources and Fish and Wildlife Services recommendation in our ordinance so that natural resources are truly protected, not just assuming that those recommendations will be followed. Too many times I've had to tell students that they need to fix the mistakes left to them by previous generation. I hope you are not looking to mistake for others to fix in the futures. Created an ordinance that takes care of the citizen and their need. I.D. Ring, Citizen of Ross. Dan and Becky Rooney from Red Island. Floyd County Supervisor. We are very concerned about the wind farms possibly being built near us. We have heard there are a lot of issues with these things and just don't think they are a good thing for our county. There are so many issues people have with noise, shadow, and then being built way too close to people's houses. And now we hear about the problems with fiberglass shed. How can you think risking our water supply when we have this karst soil is a good idea? We would rather have safe water than dirty money these companies want to pay us off with. The next comment is from Calvin Schultz. First of all, I'm for the wind generator. One, moving a half of acre of farm ground out of production does not match the amount that the landowner would get in rent back each year, plus the amount they would get for each kilowatt. Two, the need to keep electric costs down. Three, the tax stairs, tax dollars that we bring into the county to pay for EMS, roads, and bridges, plus many other needs for the county. Four, to help keep the property taxes down in the county for everyone. Five, the wind generators help by keeping the wind mixed up for better air quality. You say that it would spoil my own, my very own farm ground? How about the hog confinement? The communication ports, the high-line towers, the bad buildings, the weeds that are growing up so high, the exeter truck traffic on the county road? You do not want wind generators about we raise your practice taxes. You have back outs. The electric bill gets a lot higher. If we did not have electricity, no running water, no lights, no heat, no air conditioning, no electric appliances, and so many other items. County cannot afford to lose the income from the wind generators to keep the taxes down. Do you want to stay stagnant or go forward with the wind generator? With sacrifice comes progress. We need to go ahead and get this ordinance passed and move forward. With best wishes, Calvin Schultz. Ben Steamer from Mokelogi. To the Board of Supervisors, this is an email that's been sent to request the Board of Supervisors to affirm and adopt the ordinance that the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended earlier this year. We have owned land in Floyd County for 24 years. Although we do not live in Floyd County, we have signed up per se in the wind turbine program. Please do not mistake that although we do not live in Floyd County, we are surrounded by wind turbines experiencing no ill effect. We feel this initiative is done so by forward-thinking people for the welfare of Iowa. The countries in Europe have used this system for years, dating as far back to the use of simple windmills. Wind turbines are part of the Iowa heritage. One needs only to look at Iowa's vehicle license plate for wind turbines are clearly displayed. Respectfully, Ben Steamer of Mokelogi. All right, this next comment is from Dave Schuster, Floyd County Farm Landowner. Floyd County Board of Supervisor. I want to let you know that I approved the planning and zoning commission's recommendations regarding wind energy ordinances and encourage you to approve it as written. There are many reasons why I approve wind energy, but the main one is the chance to turn to alternative energy sources for future generation. Fossil fuels are a finite source, but harnessing wind is a very viable renewable energy source. Climate change is real. Turbines only run on demand, and wind farms take less farm out of production than new acreage each year. It is encouraging to read about the changes that have already occurred in wind turbine development over the last 20 years with reductions in noise and flicker, plus new technology in blade construction, improved recycling blade initiatives already in development. According to the 2022 USDA Census of Agriculture, Floyd County, the average day with farmers are 260 less than the age of 35, 795 between the ages of 35 and 64, and 647 that are 65 and older. If we look around the room tonight, I will say that is accurate. This also tells me that those farmers over the age of 65 or nearing retirement do not have the capacity to earn off the farm income and a second job. I believe that most younger farmers, including those reaching retirement age, either worked off the farm at the second job or their spouse did financially make farming money. By potentially receiving farm income from a wind turbine, this would help with expenses. As the old saying goes, the only sure thing is taxes and debt. With the Floyd County population decreasing and taxes going up, incoming, the income potential from wind farms is a strong benefit to the county and taxpayers alike. Thank you for your time. This is Schuster. Dear Floyd County Supervisor, I hope this time you do well. I would personally like the supervisor that represents the red township to read this email. That is where I live and think he should read it for his constituents. So with unanimous consent of the board, I will give this to Supervisor Jim Jorgensen.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. It's from Gary Straupe. I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the submitted activities presented in the recent public hearing by Merlin Barks and Ingraham Energy, specifically concerned with implications of karst topography in Worth County and surrounding areas. During the period, Merlin Barks claimed karst topography was something to worry about within that stretch of eastern Worth County to the Mississippi River, the state's Mississippi. Worth County predominantly contributes transitional karst, characterized by 50 to 100 feet of sediment cover, which significantly differs from the active karst in Worth County, where sediment cover is 25 to 50 feet wide. Most of Floyd County has active karst, which presents different set of environmental challenges and risks. Additionally, this department mentioned the wind farm rebuild in Chicksaw County karst topography. This is entirely false. Only 2% of Chicksaw Townies are karstic, but actually and no wind turbines are really starting to enter these areas. Historically, Worth County had very few sinkholes. However, other surveys have identified clusters of sinkholes within wind farms and near rapports. This development raises significant concerns about the potential impact of such activities on our global environment and groundwater systems. Another point, with no evidence of Straupe's personal absurdity of wind turbines, he mentioned having a wind turbine decommissioned on his farm due to catastrophic failure resulting in hazardous debris, being detached over 1,800 feet from the turbine. This incident underscores the potential dangers associated with wind turbines, particularly in sensitive geological areas like those with karst topography. It is crucial to approach to development of wind turbines with comprehensive understanding of the geological, environmental characteristics of our region. As for representations and oversight to meet long-term environmental degradation, posed risks to safety and well-being of the communities. I urge you to consider the points carefully and take a more informed and cautious approach to wind turbine development in areas of karst topography. Our environment and our communities are coming less. Thank you for your attention, Senator. Consider the very sorry.
The next email we received was from Sarah Straupe. And Sarah also asked, I would like my district supervisor Jim Jorgensen to read this email. Is there a percent love supervisor Jorgensen to read the email?
Yes.
And this one is from Justin Straupe. I'd like to address the issue of what a fair setback is for all parties involved. I believe a setback should be 2,500 feet of occupied, occupied grounds and livestock facilities, not the 1,500 feet the zoning board agreed to. The 2,500 feet more, more fairly protects the non-vegetable space landed. Mark, you and Merlin Barks hold that out, and you put wind turbines within 1,500 feet of homes, those not within a greater distance away. Those within a greater distance away at about 2,500 feet. The zoning board, or the all nine of them, decided that 1,500 feet setback. Only one person on the zoning board known the increased setback. The other people are fine at 1,500 feet because it really doesn't affect them because they live in town or are, excuse me, or are inside of the five-mile radius of the airport. So they have a greater setback distance. All these people show up in Des Moines, Rochester, or other big cities to tell us how much we need this wind power, yet they are not willing to live by it. But 2,500 feet setback isn't going to stop the building of wind turbines. It just makes it better for everyone living in town. But 2,500 feet setback isn't going to stop the building of wind turbines. It just makes it fair for everyone living in town. If you are a participating landlord. Or you and a bunch of your neighbors are participating landlords, you can sign up and wait for distance requirements through their own house and property lines. This allows you to participate if you want while still protecting rights of non-participating landlord. Another concern is detecting cars photography. 1,000 feet setback should be required from all existence sinkholes. This is the thing, this is the livestock facility has to be from a sinkhole. This is important to protect groundwater. Groundwater is one less source we don't want to screw up. In conclusion, all I'm trying to do is be fair to both parties with 2,500 foot setback. Thanks for taking the time to read this, Justin. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you, Jim. Next email is from Bartha Strabi. And she also asks, as a resident of Rudge Township, I would like to have Kim Jorgensen read my emails since he is my representation on the Board of Supervisor. So with unanimous consent of the board, we'll let Jim read this email.
I'm writing to discuss some of these concerns regarding an ongoing issue of leading edge erosion in wind turbines. Particularly in regions characterized by harsh photography. These concerns are not pertinent to the safety and safety of wind energy, but also to the environmental and structural stability of our nation. Leading edge erosion is a significant problem that has been increasingly documented across the wind energy sector. In Iowa alone, over 3,300 wind turbine blades had to be replaced due to this very issue. Erosion reduces the air conditioning efficiency of blades, leading to increased energy output and increased operational costs. Furthermore, the need for frequent replacement disrupts the continuity of the energy supply and increases the cost of work and associated with manufacturing and transporting new blades. I do not believe that the wind turbine representatives be citing this fact. The issue becomes even more critical when we consider replacement of wind turbines in areas of harsh photography. Our landscapes, part of dissolution and solid oil rocks are characterized by underground drainage systems, sinkholes, caves. These areas are particularly vulnerable to the environmental and service. Heavy concentration activities associated with wind farms can separate the sustainability of these regions. Leading to potential ground subsidence and collapse. This is, this not only poses a risk to wind turbines itself, but also threatens the surrounding ecosystems and communities. Moreover, the environmental impact of blade erosion cannot underestimate the blades degrade particles that reach into the atmosphere that surround areas and thirdly, the inclusion of dental health risks for nearby residents and wildlife. Regions with harsh photography. These particles can easily controllate underground water systems, leaving contamination and further environmental degradation. It's imperative that we address these issues with a sense of urgency and responsibility. I urge you to consider the following actions. Number one, conduct comprehensive assessments supporting installation of wind turbines through geological and environmental assessments. Should be conducted to evaluate the sustainability of cars regions, such projects. Number two, promote transparency of what awareness information about the environment and operational challenges associated with wind turbines. And with wind turbines should be transparently shared with the public and stakeholders, foster informed decision making. Our commitment to renewable energy should not come with the expense of environmental integrity, our community safety. By addressing the issues of leading edge erosion and specific vulnerabilities to harsh photography. Martin Strabi, the township, thank you.
The next comment is from Merlin Barts. Regarding cars photography documents. Dear Chairman Tune and Supervisor Jorgensen and Kiefer, thank you for your service and for your dedication to Floyd County and its citizens. Please find enclosed a couple of maps and a short article regarding Iowa landforms as an addendum to this letter. To further reinforce my oral comments at the Floyd County Board of Supervisors' public hearing held last Monday, July 29th regarding cars photography. As stated then in general terms, cars photography in Iowa generally is found in the eastern portion of Worth and Segroda counties. Adjoining the eastern moraines of the Des Moines Global Glacier and can be found in portions of virtually all counties east and southeastern. For the most part, the Iowa surface, the Palazoic Plateau and the East Central Drift Plains landform in the state. In more general terms, almost an exact overlay with the Iowa portion of the Driftless area. As you know, throughout the cars region, counties in North Central and Northeast Iowa, there exist at this time many turbine projects that have been built and are currently operating. Geotechnical studies as part of any overall environmental studies ensure that turbines and bases are placed properly. These studies are crucial in determining appropriate sites and eliminating a specific site for any identified environmental and safety concern. As stated, as stated in Michael Bonk's article in Proceedings of the Iowa Academy of Sciences. Cars photography is an integral part of the northeastern Iowa landscape. It has been developed in the region for hundreds of thousands of years and will continue to do so in the future. Hazards can be minimized, however, through proper foundation studies and placement. Once again, thank you for your service and amount of time you've dedicated to educating yourselves about various proposed Floyd County projects. Believe the Plannin Zoning Commission's recommendation forwarded to you. Your consideration are balanced and were recommended in the best interest of Floyd County. And it says, we urge you to adopt ordinances proposed, respectively Merlin Barts. And it cites three different enclosures regarding cars photography. In the state. Thank you, Merlin. Next email is from Erin Trask. I don't know where Erin Trask lives. She doesn't sell us. Dear Floyd County Board of Supervisor, I am writing to bring your attention pressing concern regarding wind turbine safety that has significant implications for our communities and environment. The distance debris is thrown from wind turbines during fires and other catastrophic failures. Consider the recent fire on the next air energy farm on the Steuben Allegheny County line in New York State. A massive wind turbine was ablaze hundreds of feet in the air with black smoke billowing from the inferno. The turbine thoroughly destroyed after hours of burning released not just smoke, but almost fiberglass. But also fiberglass debris into the wind. This incident is not isolated. We have seen these close as Worth County, Iowa on multiple occasions. Wind turbines standing hundreds of feet tall are subject to various mechanical failures and adverse weather condition. That can cause parts to detach and be propelled over great distances. Studies and field reports indicate that debris from wind turbine failures can be thrown as far as 2,000 feet or more. Such incidents not only endanger human life, but also threaten livestock, wildlife, crop. In the Steuben Allegheny incident, a nearby family and their livestock were directly impacted by airborne fiberglass. While their frocklands were contaminated with debris. These situations underscore the urgent need for stricter safety protocols and buffer zone around wind turbines to protect communities and the environment. To mitigate these risks, I urge you to consider establishing greater distances between wind turbines and residential agricultural and recreational areas can significantly reduce the risk of injury. And property damage from graves. Thank you for your time and consideration. Best regards, Erin Trask. This email is from Cindy Trenton. To the Floyd County Board of Supervisors, I am contacting you today regarding the setbacks for the potential wind power project employed. My name is Cindy Trenton and I hold an Iowa all sciences teaching license for grades five to 12. Currently teaching students in grades six to twelve. I have four grown children and eight grandchildren. I am a lifetime resident of the city of Rockford, Floyd County, Iowa. Mid-Continent. Independent system operator, VSO. Issued curtailment notices on July 29th, 30th and 31st. Asking some area businesses to limit their use of electricity due to shortages in inadequate system. Current energy demands are rising and often exceed supplies. In February 2023, US Energy Information Administration report. States that 22% of current energy supplies would have to be replaced with alternative sources. The Iowa Farm Bureau echoed this thought within the month, calling wind energy among the most viable of sources to avoid threats. Current standards of living, proposed wind turbines ensure that those in proximity will be least affected by power outages since only excess power enters the grid. Most area schools have a one-to-one ratio of Iowa students to e-devices and internet access is key to education. Many schools have replaced physical textbooks and assignments with digital resources. Unreliable energy and communication will reduce or eliminate many educational opportunities. Greater impacting students with various handicaps, defaulting to acceptable denial of education. Please consider the long-term effects that this generation of students has already faced due to COVID-19 crisis in 2020. In addition, homes. Grocers, medical and emergency services may also be impaired. Efforts to reduce fossil fuel consumption are at crossroads with unprecedented increasing demand for energy. Harnessing demand is ancestral form of power dating back to ancient time. Yet it is a step for extending our nation's fossil fuels, ensuring local continuous energy for today. In the world of science, form follows function and the beauty of a thing is found in its contribution to the whole. As said, I found the towers beautiful. Iowa is one of the first communities in this area to erect windmills. I used to drive with my kids just to look at them. One of the last things we did with granddad before he passed away was go for a scenic drive. He wanted to experience Clear Lake one last time, requesting that we go through the Ventura area to get there because he wanted to see the windmill on what proved to be his last outing. Considering all that has been presented, I respectfully ask. Kathy Trenton, thank you. Okay, we're ready. Not gonna hurt any. We're reading all emails. If they came five minutes late, we did that last time and we're gonna do it again. The Board of Supervisors, if your costs go up in your business, you raise the prices of government. If our costs go up, we can't do that. Eventually, some farmers will have to sell their land, hard telling what it thought good to use for them. This payment will help cover expenses which will help some farmers stay in the family. The funds of the county will get, would be a boost to the economy. Let the windmills be a choice. We had to sell six acres to the highway, project against our wishes. The looks of the windmill are people's opinion. When I told friends about the windmills, they say how pretty they are. I agree. The main thing is let it be the landowner choice. Georgina Vetter, thank you.
My name is Gary Vetter. I live at 2461 Pictor Avenue, Chell City in Floyd County. Please don't regulate the rules for wind energy so much that I don't have a choice to have a wind turbine on my 120 acres of land. Please, please don't make the choice for me. We still live in the USA where we have choices. We don't live in Russia where things are decided for us. The rules of Plannin zoning are posing are over-regulating enough that I still may not be able to get a wind turbine on my property. If anything, short setback. Plan for wind energy and green energy. Save our environment for our children. Thanks, Gary Vetter.
All right, next email is. From. D and T. Weep tea. Uh, praise. All right. Greetings, Board of Supervisor. Unfortunately, I've not been able to attend the meetings about the wind turbines, so have not had a chance to voice my opinion, which is. I do not want more of them in Floyd County in caps. It's all about the money, isn't it? It's my understanding that the pain reason Floyd County and its residents are even looking at implementing more turbines as revenue. The lure of money is strong. People will sign the contract thinking about their bank account, not giving a second thought of future consequences. And some people simply don't care because they'll not be here in 50 years, which is sad because the next generation will be left to deal with them. Worse yet, have one in their backyard while they're raising their families who really will benefit from these turbines in our county. Not the good faithful residents of Floyd County, just the few who sign the contracts in the county budget. Will we receive the power that's supposed to make? No. Then there is no reason to have them here. If they're sending the power outside of our county state, then they need to put them close to where it's needed. Not string cables to our land for thousands of miles. I don't care if we have harvestable wind. Other places do too. There are other better ways to get energy. Put solar panels over large parking lots, non-adhesive, not taking up farmland. Providing shade and giving revenue to the cities and county. The company is offering a fifth-year contract, correct? What happens when this contract is expired or there's no longer a need for them? Will the company be green and take them down, pull up all that cable and properly dispose of them? How will they dispose of? Are they recyclable? Will they end up in landfill somewhere or just be abandoned? These turbines will be taking valuable precious farmland, disrupting the quiet where we can now hear the corn grow. Cattle lowing in soft breeze of trees. They litter our beautiful sky. Our children will have to see and hear them and likely deal with them when the company abandons them. I don't want that. You want that for your children, grandchildren? I beg you, please do not allow more in our county. I want Floyd County's children, all children. Grow up in a world of freedom and peace with the ability to look at our sky and be in awe of the wonder and vastness of it without the distractions. Of wind turbines, don't you? Let Floyd County be a beautiful oasis in a world that is already cluttered and invasive. Please rethink this and why you want to push it forward. It doesn't benefit all of us and it should not happen. A select few in the county budget isn't enough of a reason. Please, please do not let more in our county. To the Board of Supervisors. Through my research, I am finding out that wind turbines aren't green at all. 24/7 annoying sound vibrations that can be health hazard for human. Shadow flicker also can be a health hazard for humans. Non-recyclable parts, blades of recycled fibers that go into concrete when fibers are shaded off, they go into the soil into our water system. Shards of fiberglass by. Bisphenol A BPA. From ice hail, surface stripping of edge falls to the ground and it gets into our water system. It is very dangerous for animals and humans. Bisphenol ABPA is the most toxic substance we know. Swedish EPA. Endocrine disruption for human health. Very persistent, very bioaccumulative. Majority of blades end up in landfills where biosphenol A is leached out in groundwater. Far from saving future generations, wind turbines could prevent them too. Bisphenol, a pollution from wind turbines. What's wind energy impacts and issues? Please protect Floyd County's quality of life for now and future generations. Thank you for this opportunity. Ronde Westergaard, Chell City. Did anyone know the pronunciation of bisphenol A BPA? John, you know what that is? Is my pronouncing it right? Bisphenol?
Bisphenol.
Bisphenol, it's got an S in it. Bisphenol? Okay, sorry if I mispronounced it. Okay, Dear Floyd County Supervisor, thank you for your continued consideration of public comment regarding the future of wind energy system Floyd County. Amendment before you would sound. Amendment before you is sound, reasonable, and crafted with the public safety foremost in mind, taking expert testimony and research into consideration in every step of the way. In adopting it, you are allowing landowners the opportunity, should it present itself, to diversify their income in the form of a land lease to the, to an interested party, plain and simple. Last week, we heard news of the impending agricultural financial crisis. Yesterday, the stock market fell sharply amid fears of a recession. Farmers and county taxpayers could use a break in some financial security. You, the Board of Supervisors, have had have it in front of you tonight in the form of a solidly written amendment recommended by your own planning zoning commission. My colleagues and I at Clean Grid Association, again, thank you for the efforts made to consider the best practices for wind energy citing and urge you to adopt the recommended amendment. Sincerely, former State Senator Jeff Danielson and Wayland Brown. Didn't we hear, didn't we, haven't we heard from Julie already? All right, this is the second email from, I'm gonna read it. Next.
It's got about seven o'clock.
Okay, all right, next. As a farmland owner, I would like the three county supervisors to consider that you play a big role in the windmill decision for many owners. I am concerned about the many owners that are not living on their land. I feel their priority is the money, not all the negative aspects of the windmills. The county may be in favor of windmill because they only see the possibility of a great deal of money. The county needs to live within their mean, just like the farmers. Please think of the negative impact it permanently has on our valuable farmland. Would the setback and restrictions be enough from your home? Thank you. Frost Family Farms, Jerry Frost. Have we read all the emails? Okay. Dear Floyd County Supervisors, I am writing to express our family's approval and support of the Wind Ordinance Amendment as approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission without additional restrictions. Signed, family with three living generations in Floyd County vested in agriculture, land, and rural policies. Who's that from? Steve Murphill.
Sister two signed petitions. Two additional.
Alexis Stilly. This is? No. The scent. Hello. Tasked or two-time petition in relation to the Floyd County industrial wind ordinance discussion. Thank you, Alexis Stilly. So we proceed, what was it? Fifty-eight? This evening, four hundred and thirty-two, by the way, did we ever find those?
I don't have any time, but Robin Fox had those too.
You know how many? Eight? All right, are there other comments, emails? To the best of our knowledge, we've read every email that has been sent to us. Everyone has had an opportunity to give their three minutes at the stand, so we're getting close to the closing the public hearing. So just want you to know if there are anyone else who'd like to make a comment. And auditor car is, reads the stand, our chair recognizes auditor car for your public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, most things come down to money. In the case of the turbines, I believe it is the best interest for everyone. But setbacks that allow wind energy companies to build in our county is a rational and reasonable way for the Board of Supervisors to address our future needs and devote controversy to that disappointing. I believe the setbacks offered by the zoning commission are reasonable. I believe the setbacks offered by the petition are unreasonable. Possibly there is a middle ground within adjustment to setbacks for dwellings that would aid noise and shadow flicker. I hope the board can come up with some compromises that work for the wind companies and alleviate some of the concerns that hurts who's saying petitions. I look forward to reporting entertaining amendments with future readings of the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Thank you, Edith Byrne. Is there anyone else who'd like to comment to the board who hasn't already exhausted the opportunities that have been made available to you? Is anyone listening on the phone call-in line that would like to make a comment at this time?
Mark, this is Travis. I'd like to make a comment.
McCuskey.
Yeah, Travis, go ahead.
Hey, I would like to finish reading my mother's email and then make a couple quick comments with my three minutes I have.
Go ahead.
Finishing off where you left with mom, I did sign the petition that over five hundred Floyd County residents have also signed for stricter regulations when it comes to installation of turbines to the carst areas. I believe those regulations should be added to the amendments as stated in the petition to protect our drinking water.
Second, what, pardon? Yeah, well, it was kind of at the end, and he was commenting on, he was actually commenting on, stop the clock, please. Actually, Travis was commenting on his ability to speak at the next hearing. So we'd counted that as not speaking. So we gave him three minutes' time. How much is left?
There's two minutes.
Two minutes left, Travis.
I have a minute and thirty left, or sorry, two thirty left, and only at twenty-eight seconds.
You have two minutes left, Travis.
Okay.
That's the, the clock was running.
So from a health concern, I suffer from tinnitus. If you don't know what that is, I consider.
Let's get the mic straightened out so everybody can hear his remark.
Okay, go.
How about I just give you the two minutes to read the rest of the email?
Okay, can we get the mic there?
I got it there.
We'll do the best we can, all right? Thank you. Go ahead.
From a health concern, I suffer from tinnitus. If you don't know what that is, I consider yourself very lucky. The humming and ringing in my ears from the disease makes the questioning, makes me question living on a daily basis. Studies have shown that these turbines only intensify the symptoms of tinnitus, so I will constantly be in a state of pain on an amplified level. I retired early because the ringing had gotten so bad I could no longer perform in my job and have been only able to find solace at home or out in nature or on our acreage. If we are looking to protect bird habitats and other animal sanctuaries, maybe we should look at the humans that these will impact because tinnitus isn't the only disease these turbines further impact. I want you to take a moment and think about the moral of the story from one of my favorite movies, It's a Wonderful Life. In the movie, George Bailey thinks his life has no impact on the community when in reality he couldn't be further from the truth. The small business mentality in me relates deeply to this movie because each of us has the opportunity to impact our communities in a positive way. Had George Bailey never existed, the town of Bedford Falls would have become Potterville, becoming one that greed for money turned what was once a community full of friendly faces and thriving businesses turned into a desolate place with lower income housing, brothels, and crime. I'm not saying what, I'm not saying that would happen if we did these turbines to our community, but I want you to look further from the lens that each of us versus only seeing the money aspect. Today, we have landowners who want to see Floyd County preserved for the next generations, other landowners, several who do not reside in the state or on the land for which the turbines are rebuilt, who see only dollar signs because they are in the community, a few who can opt into putting in the windmills on their land. Greed must not win out as we are destined to have no further, no future for Floyd County. One person can make a standing voice today. Several of us had bonded together this past year to look out our own Bedford Falls at the risk of it becoming a Pottersville and ruining the wonderful life we've come to love in Floyd County. So now I ask you, would you rather live in the great county of Floyd today or the Pottersville version of the, what we're heading for tomorrow?
Thank you, Travis. Are there any other comments? I don't know. About to close the public hearing. I would attain a I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Did anybody get an email from Laura Cunningham?
Laura Springs.
Correct.
I don't think I did.
Let me look. Recently?
I can't tell you the date. During the meeting, I had texts, so the email didn't get read, and I can't find it in mine either.
Keller said it, we'll read it. Oh, there's Ron Litter. Didn't read his. I'll read that one right now. And if she's got an email to send to us, please send it to us, and we'll read it right now. This one is from Ron Litter. Floyd County Supervisors. I'm communicating to you my support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's recent recommended changes to the Floyd County Wind Ordinance. The benefits to the participants and property taxing authorities far outweigh concerns some have for wind energy expansion. Floyd County has experienced a very successful wind farm model, and the proposed changes will continue to provide opportunities for future development. Mid-American Energy currently has some of the lowest cost electricity in the direct incentive for business on the employed tally in the region. I urge your adoption of the Planning and Funding Commission's unanimous recommendation. Ron Litter, Green Island. Yes, I will. Looking for some other ones. Do you have an email? Is there a question? We asked her to send it in. If she wants to, she can send it in. We can't see it. I, I find it in mine. Did you find it anything?
Is that Brad Cunningham from Osh Springs? Is that his wife?
Correct. I have nothing from Brad or Laura.
I can't find anything either.
She can't send it now. Okay. To the best of my ability and this board's ability, I believe we've read every email, responded to most all of them. And we'll have at this time, we're asked, is there any final statement that members of the public would like to make before I entertain and vote to close the public hearing? Hearing done. We need a motion and a second to vote to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to post-public hearing.
A second.
Have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen and seconded by Supervisor Kiefer to close the public hearing. Further discussion? Any comment from anyone listening on the phone line? Any comment for anyone here?
It's discussion. This is a different, this isn't.
We're taking action on discussion, this public hearing, we're not taking additional public comments at this time. That, our motion, the second, is to close the public hearing. If you want to talk about that, we're fine, but you're not, you've already used your time at the podium to comment last week.
Okay, I don't know if we could discuss issues with the, with the my things first, the meeting.
Yeah, we're closing the public hearing, and then we'll explain about the first reading, but yes, as we agreed to it, our, our meeting that you're aware of.
Okay, I just had some concerns with the meeting that I thought this was the time to bring it up.
No.
Okay.
It's not. We are, have a motion on the second on the floor to close the public hearing. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. The next part of our agenda is the first reading of the ordinance. And this is the ordinance. We're not going to read it all as already the samples, but here it is. Hopefully, and I'm sure you're very aware of it. This is the time that we have the first reading of the ordinance. And so what that means is, do we consider the ordinance? We've heard your public comment. And it's here before us time. It is also the time when a member of the Board of Supervisors can offer an amendment, a written amendment to this ordinance. If that happens, a representative who is supportive of the ordinance will be given up to five minutes to support their, to state that fact. Anyone who is opposed to the ordinance amendment can speak for five minutes. And that's the process that we approved through the past week. So before we take any action regarding the first reading of this, ask the Board of Supervisors at this time, do you have any questions of any of the presenters? Mr. Robbins, the wind turbine companies, any of the people who have taken time to come to this meeting and present their, their beliefs? This is the time for the Board of Supervisors to ask questions and ask anything. Do, if members of the board have any comments or questions you'd like to ask any of our presenters or anyone else that's would like to. Chair recognizes Supervisor Kiefer.
Can you say?
Yep.
This is the question for you, basically, Tom. The wind farm that currently stopped here on her way to end here approximately twenty years. And until recently, there hasn't been any interest in wind turbines until the last couple of years. What is the reason for this sudden interest? Is it because of the Inflation Reduction Act that increased your subsidies and extended them potentially?
Answer the question for the podium, please, so we can all hear it.
I think, I think there's a couple factors that go into play with that. One, I think you've heard a lot of conversations about the limited abilities to, of, of power in general, the rolling blackout conversation. It sparked an interest across the country. Renewable energy is, is growing leaps and bounds, not just in the valley, but across the country because of lack thereof, power and the problems that are persisting elsewhere. I would also say that commercial industrial users are driving a big portion of that energy, which means traditional transmission and energy sources are being used up by a lot of the CNI, commercial industrial users. So that's creating a greater need and more power be generated. So that's a major piece of it. I'm not going to stand here and claim that the tax credits don't drive that, that situation and the desire to produce more power and build projects. But it certainly is something, as has been indicated, it's a need, therefore, the The uh tax credits are being brought there to increase the production to keep up with the necessity for power. Does that, does that help that too?
Yeah.
Yep.
Can I get to me too? I can, I can just briefly echo what Tom said, what he said was, you know, exactly what. Uh, the points I was going to make as well. Um, I would also say that Floyd County, in itself, why we're here in this conference. I mean, there's many things that you need for a wind project. Um, the main three are participating landowners, uh transmission capacity online, which we're doing, you know, interconnection studies to make sure that. That is still viable, which it is. And, and a strong wind resource. Iowa is blessed with that and Iowa should continue to harvest that, so. That's it.
Questions, Tom? I don't have any to strike. All right. Um. Are there amendments from the board to consider at tonight's meeting?
Here it is.
All right, say your amendment.
The first amendment would be the intent in the ordinance. Uh, these amendments came from the. Group of opposition or the folks that signed the petition. Uh, the purpose that an intended ordinance could provide an early process for regulating the development and operation of large scale farm projects. In the uncorporated areas of Floyd County. Because of the significant long lasting impacts on county's residents, natural resources and infrastructure resulting from such effects. The Floyd County Board of Supervisors believe that it is in the best interest, the public's best interest. That the supervisors retain final authority over an issue less than was seen that the UTS program. And it goes on to say that all references to the Board of Adjustment appearing in the ordinance should be changed to Board Supervisors. In any language during or additionally, this information should be changed to the last specific program by Floyd County Board of Supervisors.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. We have a motion and a second to change the intent language. Of the ordinance. But actually. Changes a lot more than intent language, we're, we're changing the whole structure of it, but this change. This is a process that we've talked about to this day. Um, and so where is the intent language that you're referring to?
Hey Jade.
Thank you.
Okay, eight. On the bench, vile.
Hey Jade, at the counter.
Yes, I did. So, if, um. So we're into, we're into discussion now. On. This amendment to the ordinance. Uh, and I'd uh like to have John Robbins. Please comment on what this would do. This, this, this proposed change, what is being proposed here.
Like procedure.
Speak into the mic, sir.
Uh, procedurally, um. Zoning is regulated by Code 335, um, that enables county to zoning and since you have zoning. Uh, my recommendation would be to stick with processes that are kind of established, um, permitting the ordinance or. Uh, they also establish special exceptions conditional uses, which is what we have currently in this draft right now. Um, you do have the discretion of, um, one potential tool instead of calling it like wind permit or something like that. Go through zoning process, which we discussed in our previous discussions, our workshops, that sort of thing, so. Um, just kind of adjusting that language if you wanted to adopt that amendment, um, to a rezoning process or. Uh, like renewable energy overlay district or wind. Like a wind energy overlay district, you could do the same for battery use too, if you prefer. We also have that as a conditional use permit. So this is organized, uh, we have chapter 21 of the zoning ordinance. So in the current ordinance draft we have now, it's organized to have, um, basically a conditional, just like special protection for requirements for specific types of conditions. So we just have to reconfigure that to, um, accommodate a, a different process. If you prefer, if you think it's more appropriate to be under your authority as the decision makers. And some counties have adopted that, like in county, and we also talked about, we had Clinton County, uh, in one of our workshops too, so. I guess that's my comment on that, doing it as rezoning if you prefer to have it by you.
Uh, Supervisor Kiefer, I noticed you mentioned this was brought up by a group that bought us a petition, is that correct?
Yes.
I don't see this listed on any petitions that they requested this. That was signed by any of the people.
I don't think it was on a petition, but it was presented to me by the, by that group.
So this is not part of the petitions that we received, 432 plus. DA plus a hundred. There was nothing in that regarding the change to, from a Board of Adjustment decision to the Board of Supervisors, is that correct? Supervisor Burris, do you have any comments on that? Yeah. Brief one. Well, this is not the state. You've got the. I, yeah.
I, I got it. That's last week, previous meeting. Now, Speaker, Supervisor Kiefer.
What's that?
I got fifteen years, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, I haven't, I haven't figured out that's motion, I. I think like the new slide supervisor can, it's a final. Process, final decision is. And John, I'm understanding from you that. It can maybe begin as a review.
Uh.
I'm just saying that like a proper procedurally, um, you do it as a rezoning base, but you like over, like it overlay district may apply on top of the existing. Zoning districts like the industrial type district where it adds these additional requirements. So we can go through you, this would go through a rezoning process if you split aside. Um, I think that'd be the proper method of, that's like, and county does that, for example, so it can be. I'm not saying it can't be done. I'm just saying we just need to reconfigure the language and put that, what was written.
Of this.
Yeah.
And that can be done.
Yeah.
I do want to point out that if you change the. As the amendment says, all references to the Board of Adjustment appearing in this ordinance shall be changed to the Board of Supervisors. And any language regarding conditional use permits shall be changed to the process approved by the Floyd County Board of Supervisors. Is attorney, uh. Is our attorney here?
No, he left.
Charlie's here?
Yeah, Charlie's here, he's my attorney.
Uh, he's not our county attorney, however. Um, the. What you're asking for. If you change everything from Board of Supervisors. From conditional use permit, Board of Adjustment to Board of Supervisors. It's. I don't think it's going to, you can't do that, because the Board of Supervisors does not approve. Of some of these things that they're talking about. It's a different process to set up with the Board of Supervisors. You just can't change the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Adjustment to the Board of Supervisors and.
We're not doing that. Can we have, do we have Mr. Critcher take a look at this?
He's not here right now.
On all this other time, or not?
Well, we, we can, but, um. Um, yes, this is, I recognize it, Jesse Woods.
Yep, uh, so Jesse Woods.
To the mic, please.
Yes, in Floyd County is only a administrator, I do live in the city of Floyd. Um, I believe you could do a zoning overlay district, it will probably take a significant amount of rewriting, but I, is that an accurate statement, John? I guess I just wanted to point out that there can, that would be a fairly significant rewrite. And so. I think we need. Is that something that would be as simple, it's not just a minor tweak, it's a pretty significant change.
So I think that it's time to figure out what might be kind of reconfigured to change that process. I mean, overall, the. Like minimum requirements for the ordinance probably would be okay when having like. Reconfigure these more like procedural aspects of this, particularly the front end of that endorsement section in the chapter 21. Adjustments that we will be doing. Um. So I can, I can configure something to like. As sort of the draft amendment for the second reading and then for you guys to consider this. I, I just keep amending the, into the next, you're reading this too, so you don't have to feel like you're obligated to make a decision now. This isn't the be all, end all, so to speak. So if you approve the first reading, still do amendment second reading. So, maybe that should something with this, that's like, right on, for, yeah. Try to address the retirement and the board of supervisors. Do a rezoning process.
Um, thank you, Don, um. Without, uh, County Attorney Pritchard's, uh, input on this. As the amendment reads. It says, all references to Board of Adjustment appearing in this ordinance could be changed to the Board of Supervisors. I don't think that amendment is an order, because I don't think it's germane, is if you change every. Reference from the Board of Adjustment to the Board of Supervisors. It's not that simple. More of a process than that. But I would refer to, uh. A County Attorney Pritchard's decision whether this is the deep germane at all, because. Yes, we could change the whole process. And turn it into a decision-making process by the Board of Supervisors. But this language will not do that. Well. So we can defer, I would suggest, to, uh, County Attorney Pritchard regarding that. Could we, uh, just. Uh, there's a motion and a second. Uh, would you like to defer on this? Do we hear from the opinion of our County Attorney?
I think it'd be good to hear from Todd Pritchard, yes.
All right, if he's not here.
Last thing as well. So. Yeah, the other part of the ordinance, so, so, yes, it is, uh, so in sections two through ten, uh, we list, uh. Sections two through ten, so that's, uh, where we list, uh, commercial and energy systems of conditional use. Um, have to adjust that to the. Because otherwise it would disagree with the rezoning process. So we have to adjust that. Make it make sense for that to solve.
Um. There was a motion and a second made, uh. You'd like to defer until we hear from the County Attorney, would you like to proceed or would you like to vote on it?
For one, it is possible, but it is however, the. The language cannot be as such. And, uh, that means, uh, it would be best to defer to, uh, County Attorney Pritchard on this, so we can continue to vote on it.
There is an amendment and it's been seconded, um. As the author of the amendment, uh, would you accept, uh, that?
Yep. Well, I, I agree to let, uh, our attorney Pritchard. Take a look at it and read it.
All right, and bring this back and, and reconsider that at the next meeting? Based on his decisions, all right. Um. We, we need an action on that, because we have a motion and a second. Now it's been amended, if that's correct. You're amending the motion to say that it's, uh, we were looking for input from County Attorney Pritchard before we act. Yes. Your second amendment?
I'll second.
We have a motion, but it's, by Peter Second by Jorgensen to amend the previous motion to state. That it will be reviewed by County Attorney Pritchard to see if it is indeed germane to the, uh, discussion. Its current form and get back to this, we'll take it up at the next hearing. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there other amendments?
I have one.
Right.
Um, B1. Definition is. B number two. Building occupying, I would like to change it to. A dwelling, school, hospital, church, public library, retail store. RV travel trailer park, campgrounds, livestock facilities, egg buildings, including machine sheds, grain beds or other. Buildings used for public gathering. And the reason is this, I want to save you all of our county residents to be. Considered for this whole process.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, seconded by Kiefer to. Change the definition of an occupied building. To include. RT travel trailer, park. Campgrounds. Livestock facilities. And ag building. Including machine sheds, grain bins. Just a question, Supervisor Ferguson, are those, any of those. Facilities named in other parts of the ordinance, livestock facility, ag building, grain bins and machine sheds. Mentioned at other parts in the, in the ordinance.
I think I've seen livestock in there, I don't remember seeing machine sheds and grain bins.
So what effect would the change have? By adding these as, uh, occupied buildings?
Well. A lot of people that do occupy those spaces, uh, from time to time, they, uh. I mean, it, it's a safety. We're, we're having safety for. Uh. The purpose of residential. Uh, it's also. Safe, uh, safety for the purpose of, uh, in residential, for the purpose of state, and I think we need it for the purpose of, uh. Live, remote livestock buildings, remote machine sheds, uh. The livestock and people. why, remote livestock buildings, remote machine sheds, uh, livestock when people feed them daily. Grain bins, we wear there more often than we think, and, uh, machines as well, so. It's a safety thing for, for everyone involved.
Thank you, ever question for Don Roberts. Sean, with the, uh, passage of this change in occupied buildings reflect, uh, do separated businesses that turbines would have to build away from?
Um, page fourteen, uh, where that setback requirement table, there is setback, well, in the occupied building, so that will stand, uh, types of buildings that setback would apply to, um, the current livestock openness is whatever it's, uh, or it's already defined from one of these, kind of, market fleet operation, it's the same thing though. That we had to set one for that, so that we probably remove that, that, that really have part of occupancies.
And so would it increase?
Yeah, step back apply, that occupied building setback would not apply to it, so, but if you look at that way.
Thank you. Um, we've allowed five minutes for opponents of this amendment, five minutes for opponents of the amendment to comment. And so, um, at this time, the mic is available for anyone who'd like to speak in support of this or anyone who'd like to speak opposed to this.
We would really need to do some due diligence on it. I, I understand the comments, uh, but, uh, some of those, that would create significant setbacks from, uh, it would, it would, it would create possible issues with being able to cite project turbines. Farm buildings and grain building, or, and grain bins, that would be difficult. We'd have to map that out to even see if the, be a viable project with setbacks like that. So it's something that we'd have to consider internally to look at, but it does impact the project areas. But I'd have to do some really digging into it to really understand. Occupied dwelling, we've always understood throughout the process to be a home or residence or somewhere there's, you know, that's inhabited on a very, very frequent basis, like a living quarters. So I can understand RV parks, um, but some of the other ones would create, pretty, would be big buffers that we'd have to establish around those. We'd have to look into it and understand it more, but it could significantly impact the project development. Just, just so you know, I'm just being factual.
Uh, I think what means to adjust it here.
Please take your hand, Scott.
Scott Larson. Um, I think what we're talking about here is the safety of the residents and people that are around. These buildings are occupied, grain bins are occupied, farmers are out there more than what they ever are anymore, off-site and not on their direct farm site. Um, same thing with people as we're talking for the REs, the recreational areas and so forth. Uh, that all needs to go into effect on this and you need to think about the safety of the others. People else are involved with this rather than, you know, as a whole. I understand it's going to take more time, I understand it's going to take more things to do, but talk to about the citizens of the county who need to protect, it all needs to be put in place, thank you.
Uh, I have a plan with Invenergy. Just one general note on the setbacks on here. Um, if there could be some due diligence done on, on between, you know, what is an occupied building versus, that would get, commercial fleet operation, if it's being combined or not. Right, right now, it's either fifteen hundred, two point two five for an occupied building. But then it also says fifteen hundred and three times the total height for, you know, the RV trailer park conservation area, so just like, making sure that there's no doubling up if there is a definition change on a building occupied and also, you know, setback tables in here referencing the same thing, so just making sure that both setbacks aren't conflicting with each other if there's the same definition. The other piece of it is too, I mean, the, the dwelling setback of fifteen hundred feet or two times, two point two five times the total height was a balance between, um, the participating set of rights and the non-participating rights that the planning and zoning commission found. If it wasn't a set, a safety issue, um, the fif- fifteen hundred foot setback is not because of safety. It's because they want to balance the rights of the participating landowners and the non-participating landowners. So, that being said too, I mean, there, lives, having large setbacks from machine sheds, grain bins, livestock facilities, is not found in ordinances across Iowa. So echoing Thomas's point that it probably wouldn't be workable in a, you know, we'd have to see some more exact language on it.
Haley McGregor, um, we are in support of this amendment. Um, we feel like, uh, a lot of us are, this is our workshop, this is where we are every day. We are farming, we are out there in these buildings, these facilities. Um, we are out camping with our family members, different things like that. And so we really support this amendment, um, to help protect, um, the people who live and play on the land. Thank you.
There any other comments from members of, uh, in attendance today?
Gordon Bogey. Good evening. Uh, I believe this amendment is necessary to keep the wind companies as being good neighbors. Whether you got, you live in a dwelling or not, I'm still concerned about my corn bins and my machine sheds where I partner half a million dollar combine, uh, just from flying debris, if nothing else. So I support the setbacks and I support the amendment to make sure the wind companies are good neighbors to all the citizens of Floyd County, not just the ones that benefit by getting a check. Thank you all.
Thank you, Gordon.
Terry Better. I think if you guys agree to this, you might as well say every road, you cannot put a wind turbine by. You might as well say Floyd County doesn't want wind turbines. I mean, you could say every, every deer stands, every outhouse, you know, where do you cut the line? Every moving vehicle, I think it's, shouldn't do it.
Thanks. We haven't used up five minutes' time yet, if anyone would like to comment on this, you're welcome to do so.
Thomas Bean, Iowa Land and Liberty Coalition. Um, I would just say that if you're going to take a look at this and try to add these other aspects to the definition, you have to be careful that, uh, you're attempting to make it more safe. I understand that aspect to it, I could, we do, we have to make sure that it's not that perilous workability for projects here. If you're just going to throw other, um, types of buildings into dwellings, make sure that, you know, maybe you're adjusting setbacks, maybe you create a second, uh, area or the other workshops, et cetera, et cetera. You have different ordinance or different setbacks for that, so you still accommodate projects because, as you heard from the developers, if you put too many restrictions on it, you're not going to have a project at all. So I understand how strange I think, I need a little bit more due diligence looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any final comment from anyone in attendance? When I read this amendment and I read the existing language, it says occupied building. That's the definition. A dwelling, school, hospital, church, public library, retail store, or other building used for public gathering. I don't know if a grain bin is used for a public gathering. Is a machine shed, it can be, but as a public gathering place, it can be. All ag buildings. Seems to me that we're stretching this definition out into a, a lot of different areas that are not really considered public gathering. And so definitions are important because they define what the ordinance pertains to and sets setback differences. So, um, I, I don't think this amendment changes, change, the change in this amendment, actually identifies buildings that are used for public gatherings, in, in my view. Comment?
Good question. Does an occupied building need to be occupied all the time to be considered occupied?
I don't think so. I don't think so, these aren't schools, churches, public libraries, retail stores are probably not open all the time. So it's probably not, um, so. I, I don't think so is the answer to the question. I do remember during the debate on House File 2094, uh, many years ago, we've talked about the effect of livestock limitations and what took place back when the most recent change to the livestock law was made. There were attempts to put in trailer parks, trailer homes, who were brought in and just spotted there. And those are public dwellings, but they were placed there after, um, after the livestock operator had already gotten a permit. And so that was quite a discussion. Can you do that to stop someone from building a permit? I've heard a lot of people speak about how important the livestock industry is. So, um, that was a, something that happened last time legislature redid the livestock bill. But in my opinion, this would limit the placement of wind turbines in Floyd County to a point where, um, I don't think I can support it. Would supervisors like to make any final remarks?
Well, I don't know, because I, um, say this whole thing isn't about safety, well, I really think it is. I don't know what you want to say, what we did, but, uh, there's a lot of things going on in these winters. And more I learn, I think we need to strongly consider these things. We've got people that are going to, uh, these places I mentioned, and though they're not public gathering places. It, it says, "Or other building used for public gathering" and, uh, you know, if we need to change that to something else, it's, but this is, this is for the safety of our people that work and live here. Uh, we're just not throwing it out to block the buildings.
Final, which amendment?
I would tend to support him on this amendment. Um, farm buildings can be occupied and not necessarily their home. Um, grain bins, machine sheds, um, many other things. So I, turbine can, you know, is it going to be selective if it decides to hit an acreage? If it's going to fall in a house or something else, so, I, I think I could support it.
Jennifer, how much time do we have for public comment yet, or with five-minute mark?
Yeah, yeah, I have, I haven't, I haven't, I didn't do it.
All right, um, we'll recognize Floyd Campbell.
Floyd Campbell, Floyd Campbell. You know, if we're going to consider, uh, that we're creating such a hardship on the energy companies because it's not doable, what about future building out here after we have the wind turbines up with farmers wanting to do something, you know, within the, the the areas? I mean, like, putting an airport in, I heard that excuse, you know, you're just going to do that to thwart the, the turbines. Uh, that's a very real possibility. Or I know, uh, some private businesses have a wedding venue things that, you know, they put in bars and, and stuff, and, uh, I, I don't, I don't think you're, we're asking too much here for the safety of the citizenry of Floyd County to go slow on this because, uh, not all is known about everything that's up with these wind turbines. Every time we've come in to these discussions, it's not a list of good things. It's a list of things that are not good that we talk about. The reason they're here to begin with is because we didn't have any ordinances. We bring up ordinances now to keep things at bay. And I don't think we've heard everything about this, so I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Lynn. Chair recognizes Merlin Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, may I see a copy of the written language, just for the results, because I haven't seen them? Okay, so just, let's face the element that's in the room, because there is one here. In many respects, I, as, as a former legislator, I'm going to speak personally about, we can talk about due diligence and safety and all those kinds of things, but as a former legislator, I personally believe this is a poison bill amendment. That's the easiest way to describe it. I'm, I'm going to be honest with you Supervisor Jorgensen, and here's why. When you place something like this in the definitions, at some point, if it's challenged, both, both those in favor and those opposed will try to find a rationale for their definition or a definition that, that, that supports their position. And in many cases, particularly with county ordinances, what will happen is, if, if Todd Pritchard was here, I wish he was here, and I see Mr. Thompson is here, maybe he can back this up without getting involved in the, you know, in the, the tit for tat, but you'll, you'll try to find a, a state definition that backs up where you're going. And we did very quickly come up with a state definition, which I can't see right now because the phone, the phone kicked out. But particularly with campgrounds, maybe your other buildings, because they're solid, okay, perhaps there's a justification for that, but specific to campgrounds, in, in campground definitions in state code, it specifically talks about any place where a tent or an RV or something is parked, basically. So really from the perspective of what you have drafted here, you could, you would never be able to put anything anywhere based upon if, if you backed up your amendment with the definition of campgrounds in the Iowa code, at least according to the way that I'm looking at it. So that's, that truly is a question for Mr. Pritchard. If that's truly what you want to do, then you're doing a great job. But I guess I would suggest from Invenergy's perspective and Next Era's perspective, I thought we were trying to find a balance here that, that would serve not only the citizens of Floyd County, but also Floyd County in its entirety. And part of the safety and the general welfare of Floyd County is providing, is making sure that you as supervisors provide adequate funds to fund services for the citizens of this county. So we'll try to look this up and, and get this to you, but there is a definition of campgrounds in the state code. You can have this back.
Uh, thank all of you for your comments. It has been moved by Supervisor Kiefer and seconded by Supervisor Jorgensen to amend the language, the definitions on page one of the amended order to include a dwelling, school, hospital, church, public School, hospital, church, public library, library, retail store. The new language is RV, travel, trailer park, campground. Livestock facilities and ag buildings, including machine sheds, grain pens. Or other buildings used for public gathering. That's the existing language, so we all know what we're talking about. Thank you for the written amendment. Final comments from members of the board. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, opposed, aye. Motion is carried. Are there other amendments?
Yes.
Page twelve. Number three, C, lighting. Power lighting shall. Five, FAA environments, but we. The least intrusive type possible for nearby residents. Red strobe lights shall be used during nighttime illumination, reduce impacts on neighboring. Uses and microturbines. No air-pulsating incandescent lights shall be used. Exceptions may be made from meteorological towers where concerns this. Relatively periodic. Aviation detection lighting systems, ADLS, shall be used. For tower lighting. During radar detection based system that shall provide enforcement of proposed lighting system with application. The app and show provide evidence to request. For use of ADLS with FAA and FCC license rate at the time of application. Shall otherwise provide documentation in case. In the case use of ADLS denied by the FAA and FCC.
So this, a proposed amendment. Would dictate that red strobe lights shall be used during nighttime illumination. Uh, to reduce impact on neighboring uses of microturbines.
That's correct.
And that no red pulsating incandescent light shall be used. Uh, I'm just thinking back on the, um.
Um, there should be copies for everyone. Should be four.
Alright, sorry, I didn't pass it down. Didn't we have testimony from, um, Bill Kyle reviewing that system?
Yes.
That we were talking about, we didn't have on that?
That was the eighth of us.
Well, that's what we're talking about right here. The distance required that system to be used, set up as feasible. And I believe Bill Kyle mentioned the fact that, uh. Not every airplane has that type of system. To identify power at the distance. Am I right on that?
Not, not quite.
But didn't he, we talked about any other lighting?
Main concern was, sorry. Building concern, uh, the ADLS system was, I have a system, that's why we specified later, I think, of both transponder base. So, uh, if electrical failure, the, um, airplane would be. The system would turn on in case an airplane. If they had electrical failure on campus. The change, that, that the change either does really speak to that concern, uh. It's more about a use of shall as the more. Where this, this change is pending. That was used. That wasn't really concerned about on the time workshops. I guess, uh, we did have some of the language in the draft that was going to be, uh, the commission for the regulations. Ultimately, the commission, uh. Re, revised, recommended revision to software language. Are preferred or, um. Should be avoided there, um. Case, there's a potential where it conflicts FAA regulations, so, you know, and. Um, if there's conflicting requirements, usually the more restrictive we govern, but in this case, the FAA is silent, so they, they have the overall authority. So we have a more restrictive requirement or potentially conflicting with that, even though they're, uh. Less stringent requirement, uh, but it would take precedence as far as authority is seek, so that's why we have the top language, that's why the. Commission recommended that are preferred versus shall be used.
Make your comments in the podium. Thanks, Tom.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, so really what's being proposed is just removing the as feasible from that paragraph.
Little more than that.
As, as preferred.
The red, well, there's a Band-Aid in the second sentence that says. Red strobe lights shall be used for nighttime. Illumination to reduce impacts on neighboring uses of microturbines. And then it adds the word no, no red pulsating incandescent light shall be used. So we're saying that. Red strobe light shall be used and no red pulsating incandescent light shall be used. Then the other change is. In the next paragraph, it says aviation detection lighting systems, ADLS, shall be used for tower lighting. That's a mandate. It takes out the words as feasible.
As I read it, I just, ultimately, it's decided by the, like, we would, as a developer, we would propose the ADLS system for federal standards. If the FAA came back and said. You can't use it, then we would fall back on what they're saying, right? Is that interpretation?
We would have to.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's what I'm just trying to get to.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other comment from any member of the public? Uh, Supervisor Jorgensen, final remarks on your amendment?
As it reads, I'm in favor of it. I, I would like to see this place.
Yes, I, I would like that.
I just have a question for Supervisor Kiefer. You are on the airport commission as a liaison airport commission. Has you ran this by them?
Yes. If I.
You ran this by any way you think that these showers are appropriate?
No, I haven't showed. I haven't showed them this. This is the first time I've seen this. Bill's concern. Bill's concern with ADLS is that no, not all airplanes got transponders, some of the older ones don't.
But you're saying they shall have.
Yes, but so. What ADLS was, was considering is instead of the airplane triggering the lights with the transponder, is that. The radar detection abilities on the towers. It would sense the aircraft would turn the lights on. My understanding. Do you agree with that, Ice?
Yeah, so I mean, I can speak to the ADLS system, um, so the ADLS system is based on the physical attribute of the plane. And so it would even in a event of an electro electrical failure, still detect, you know, aircraft over there. And we're, we're happy to, you know, the developers, we can, we can work with an ADLS system and apply for them. At, in the, at the end of the day, we need to get FAA or FCC approval for those. Um, and if, you know, we weren't able to get that, then we wouldn't. Be able to install them, obviously, but. That's, that's all I had to say too. Open, open to the questions, of course.
Uh, John, is there anything in the ordinance as amendment that states that every wind turbine has to have either a. Red strobe light or. An ADLS system?
Or this is what is stipulating the. Lighting requirements, so we're not specifying, uh, the, the. Each turbine type of light, what kind, I think that's better off to the FAA, as that's their. So I think there is some exceptions for a certain area under, that's where it's in the FAA requirements, but. Uh, I'm not. We don't have that in the draft, um, so I'm like with the FAA requirement.
Alright, further discussion? Those in favor of the mo, pardon? I thought I had a second. It has moved by Supervisor Jordan.
A second.
Is seconded by Supervisor Kiefer. Just one final question, I'm just trying to clear this in my mind. It says we shall use red strobe lights. But we shall. Not use red pulsating incandescent lights. Why? Why is that change requested? Why is one? Allowed and one prohibited in the amendment? What is it about a? No red pulsating incandescent light shall be used, but we should all use red, red strobe light?
That was taken from another. Ordinance.
I, just my question is, or is red pulsating incandescent lights, uh, less? Disruptive than red strobe light? Is that the point of this?
Sarah Keon, may I speak?
Yeah, you may.
It's my understanding that avia- aviation detection lighting systems, so they aren't blinking all the time. So that's the big, right, we want it to be shall, instead of leaving it up to their interpretation in case that they would say. No, we want these things blinking all the time, so you, you wouldn't have the lights blinking. All the time like the strobe lights we currently have or existing turbines. So it's a different system, shouldn't just constantly red blinking lights. So this will just come on when the planes are in the area. Which is one of the big things that was brought up when we were, um. At some of the meetings, that people were concerned about the. This strobe light. That were constant without the. Aviation plan.
So my question is, then, does airplane have to have an ADLS system to pick up the? What if it doesn't have one?
I don't think it has, it's not with that. It's. Yeah, it's a different, I can't explain it either.
So does every plane have one of these? Yeah.
ADLS is on the power.
So the ADLS system, very, uh. The radar requirements on separate tower, as far as, um, when we're talking about. Uh, the strobe lights versus pulsating systems, that's not really, it's just type lights that are on towers itself. Strobe lights are more immediate, you know, so it's, so we're more talking about slowing down. Frequency of and length of the light itself when it's off. Uh, the ADLS and stuff, what is when it turns those lights, so hopefully that explains the difference. That makes sense.
And so does the. So we, we stated in the, in the original ordinance that. Amendment that tower lighting shall comply with FAA requirements, but be the least intrusive type possible for nearby residents. So does anything in this ordinance, is it being considered? Conflict with FAA requirements, or can we just set that in?
I would probably recommend software language, so the ADLS system, we're requiring it in this, in the current ordinance, we're requiring it. The FAA and FCC, I will allow essentially. Uh, that shall be, uh, the reason the commission softened that language was so we don't conflict. Um, it's like we're saying we have work relating to lights and the local authorities. They're gonna have to forget. So I probably wouldn't recommend. Amendment, just for that reason. I think you'll fully take the, the. ADLS, ADLS system if they'll allow it. So I think that's the case, in terms of, in terms of keep the lights off most of the time. So the ADLS system, if it's allowed by FAA, so that's why we have that. Then it's kind of people actually did that in this ordinance. Uh, there's no other, um, ordinance that I'm aware of that has implemented that to this point throughout the state. Uh, I think there's an ADLS system that's gonna be used on a new farm in Boone County, I'll say this, but. Uh, so if you're concerned about being off most of the time, our current ordinance does have that. So, um, I find this annoying too, to be honest.
Well, thank you. Uh, we've had a good discussion on this. Is there any further comment? Go ahead.
I'll be quick. Yeah, the, the concept is that we, we would, we would go to the FAA and say, we want to put in the ADLS system, like, that's what we want to use. But the concern was, we just want to be careful that if they say, no, you can't use it, there's a fallback, and I think that's the constant link. That's, that, that is required, so, um. Just, just so the ordinance doesn't conflict with the. Alternative that the FAA may come back with is. That, that's, they're, they're gonna tell us what we, we can or can't do, so. As developers, I could. We, we want to use the ADLS system.
Tom, are you aware of any ADLS systems that are in operation now?
I, I don't, I don't know of any that are, it's a pretty new technology, maybe you guys are. Tom is making that because we don't understand. But I don't know, I don't, I think it's being constructed. It's a new farm. Somewhere around there. Boone County, uh, Boone County, Boone County was, I can't remember. Might have been.
Sorry, you asked me specifically here in Iowa?
Pardon me?
Are you specifically here in Iowa? Or just generally on wind projects today? Radar technology?
You're asking me?
Yeah, you asked.
Yeah, if, if you know of any. Wind farm that's currently using the ADLS system and if it's working correctly.
I don't know if there's any currently in Iowa. I know about DC speaking Senator Johnny Ernst, they have it. In Illinois, there's a couple of projects that have, they're still testing it, that's why they haven't. You know, applied to check a single project yet, because they're still going through those tests, and that's why it's on an application basis. So it can, it is guaranteed that a few projects haven't yet, but it's. For method of. Lighting for these projects, because no one likes blinking lights with the FAA, it's fine, I'm sitting on that, sorry, I know. If that helps. Lighting for these projects, because no one likes, uh, blinking lights with the FAA, it's fine, I'm sitting on that, sorry, if that helps.
All right, so all questions, just, if, when else have a comment? If not, those in favor of the amendment. To change red strobe lights are preferred for to red strobe lights shall be used during nighttime. And addition of the language, no red pulsating incandescent light shall be used. And deletes from the amendment draft. The language about A D L S as feasible and strike as feasible. And says that aviation detection lighting systems, A D L S, shall be used for colored light using a radar based detection system. Those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Uh, those opposed, aye. The, uh, the, are there other members?
Well, yeah. I have one. This would be under natural resource protection investigation. C A V C S or wind turbines shall not be permitted on highly productive soils for the parcel is rated an average of seventy nine point five C R, C S R two above.
Do you have a topic there?
Yeah.
You got the last two.
I'll give your mind.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Supervisor Kiefer, seconded by Jorgensen to on page. Under item three, safety design and sighting requirement, what pages is that?
I'm not sure. The section starts on page eleven, but I think this would be a new stat, here's what I have.
All right, uh. So. This is. This is.
This, you know, you know.
Okay, so you'd be adding a letter which would actually be after K. Uh, L M O on the setback. So this edition would come in under section three, it would add a new R, it would be R. A new, new language. And states that the. C W E C S or wind turbine should not permit on highly productive soils for the parcel is rated at average of seventy nine point five C S R. Chair recognizes Isaac.
Okay, so the C S R concern, assuming is the concern with land use, correct?
Highly productive soils.
Highly productive soil, so I mean, as far as wind farms do go, and the land use within them are, is very minimal. And it would only be on ground where it's participating and has signed up with the project. Just for, for example, I mean, the Chickasaw, you said it, what you see every just last year, only used zero point six acres ground. Per turbine access road, with, per, 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 from sixty six turbines. Well, be a very similar, maybe if you're smaller, but this project, it's lost from two hundred to a hundred, maybe plus. It likely be around twenty four acres or so of, of damage. With the land use, and I'm not sure what the C S R rating is, you know, within Floyd County, but. I mean, if it's higher everywhere, that it, it, that would be a poison pill for this. For the industry as well, so.
Pardon me, if you want to make a comment, you can come to the podium and state your name and make a comment, sir. Pardon me? Okay, repeat yourself, Isaac.
Uh. Uh, last piece. Was just about Floyd County and the C S R rating, uh, I, I just don't know what the C S R rating is across the country. So what the rating is and how much land it's. How best is it, it's gonna set back, so that's a.
Yeah, fair.
Chuck Colby. Uh, C S R is corn suitability rating, and if you go out here and look at all this, all the windmills that are out here. I would venture to bet a hundred dollars, there isn't a single one that's on soil. That's less than seventy nine point five C S R. But you go out here, nothing like good, or it's level. I would, you can go to the soil survey, every county has a soil survey. That was issued by the, by the state, C S R is an Iowa system. That puts a rating on how good the soil is and its capability to produce crop or crops, corn, soybeans. So seventy nine point five, anything better than that, that's good dirt. Now, I don't see any windmills. Foreground. They're always on extremely good ground. You can say they don't take out very much, but just start adding up all the things that we've done, taken ground out. So I'm not sure if that's restrictive enough. As far as that goes, and I don't know what the windmill people, when they look at that. How they will respond, I assume they want their windows on flat ground. But it's probably gonna be on seventy nine point five C S R better.
Very better. If you do agree to this, basically you're taking my choice away, it's my ground, it should be my choice. Here in more and more all the time, basically you just don't want wind energy, all you guys are supposed to represent. All people of the community, not just the negative ones, but everybody. Keep that in mind, please.
Honestly, James pointed to, um, doesn't really matter how much land it is, twenty four, whatever it's supposed to be. Um, but it's his land, he wants to use it, you don't, you can't force him to put crops there, if he wants to take three acres out and just leaves it. Um, it's, it's, uh, not really your decision to make there, so to take that opportunity away is a little frustrating on landowners. And it's all voluntary, so. Put a limitation on how he's gonna use his land, and if it's good land, that takes him out of the running, so it's all. Not really your role as the county supervisors to make, be making that decision, should be theirs as landowners, so that's all us.
Thank you.
John Murphill, uh, I don't see the difference between building wind turbines or hog building or a house. Are you gonna, are you gonna prohibit building hog buildings and houses on high C S R ground to, you know, carry this through?
Being changing, uh. I agree with Mr. Trenton's statement, and also, everybody talks about big buzzwords, eminent domain, what you're doing with this C S R cap. Is eminent domain in reverse, you're restricting development on farmer's ground that he owns. Not, you can't, you shouldn't control that, but by enacting this C S R cap, you are controlling.
No, we're, thank you, but we're not gonna start clapping for one side or the other, but thank you.
You know, we work in a lot of counties across the state, um, generally the C S R requirement comes to play when there's a desire to eliminate the ability for a project. It's just across the board. Um, I would, I would challenge the supervisors to think through how you evaluate other projects, and I, I feel like. This is taking one particular industry and pigeonholing, and in a certain way. Someone came in tomorrow and wanted to rezone a farm to residential, C S R has no play in your ordinance term, that I know, that I understand. So you would be taking and, and providing a separate classification and evaluation system for wind energy. There are counties that do regulate and address C S R in their ordinances with every rezoning they do. And in those cases, I think there's a much more compelling argument to be made that you could evaluate to get C S R. Um, as it stands, I don't think you do that, so it is, it is very, um. Difficult to see how one industry would be evaluated in that regard, one that's actually much less intrusive than a development. Um, if Walmart came in and wanted to do a Walmart warehouse in Floyd County. Would you evaluate that project with a C S R rating? I don't think you would. So I think that's something that you need to think through on how you're evaluating our project versus another project. Uh, and to the points made, as a farmer, you can put your ground in this, into C R P. Without any control whatsoever, so I thi- I think that's an important point, it's private property right, and I think it's gonna. If you want to go down the C S R route, that's fine, but I mean, it's, it's basically shuts the projects down. So just letting you know, just, I'm just trying to be factual on how that happens, but.
Jordine Metter, my husband, I own property between National and Trolley City, we. Yeah, we don't think you guys should be telling us what we can do with our lands. Um, yeah, he decides to not plant this year, what are you gonna do about that? You know, it's nothing you can say about it, why should you have any say about this? But that's still what we want to do with it.
Thank you.
John Hayes, as an electrical consumer, I'm for anything that lowers costs of electrical to the people. And also believe that's a good thing for economic development, attract other industries here. I, let's, I think these last two or three amendments, let's call them what they are, I think they're a tempest to kill the project.
Thank you, Jim.
Uh, Scott Larson. So when we set up these petitions and ask people to sign them, uh, we had them read the petitions. And if there's anything on that petition they did not agree with, or did not want, we have to cross that off. Something offensive, something, so if you go through petitions, um, or have suggestions on there, it gives us something off that they didn't want. So you have, I heard thirty three petitions stating that they, they, they want to have the C S R. Thank you.
Patrick Murphill, Rockford, uh, just a short statement, I believe that this provision. Unjustly and unfairly targets wind energy. And singles them out and holds them to a standard that no other industry in the county has been ever held. Thank you.
Cindy Trenton, Rockford, Iowa, I'm in opposition to the addition of this measure, because it gives the government. Control over the farmer, the landowner's land. I believe that that is one step closer to a government land grab, and I think that this measure should scare everybody in here.
Yes, you, Wilson, Floyd County, um, planning and zoning administrator, um, if you look into legal language for what a takings is called. I do think you are looking at dangers to a jury going to the C S R rating. Um, just look it up, it's called government takings, where a property owner can be compensated financially for a loss of property usage. I would go towards the setbacks if you're serious about more regulations and shy of different C S R ratings. John, what do you think of planning and zoning first?
That's a legal question.
Again, we've had a very good comment here tonight, if I were waiting, I just looked up the average C S R rating for all the farmland in Floyd County, it was seventy nine point five. So this amendment would exclude anything that's above the average farmland in Floyd County, putting the wind turbine on that farm, and for that reason, and. Others that have been mentioned tonight, I cannot support it.
I'm not opposed to this amendment, I am, you know, your comments, I need to, but. Defer to County Attorney Pritchard, yes, it's. I'm, uh, just to be sure we're not, uh. The version's on, but I don't want to end up with that. I am not, not opposed to Supervisor Kiefer's amendment.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we have a motion second, are there any further comments?
I think we should, uh. Continue with Todd Pritchard, get his opinion on it.
In what fashion?
Just make sure that we're doing it in a legal manner and, and, um. I'm sorry. Just like the desk to review some other things. Would, Jim, would you agree with that?
I, I would agree, I, I probably need to amend the motion.
Implement the motion. Delay this until we have Mr. Pritchard look at it.
For what purpose? To determine what? What was the language you used, Jesse?
Uh, it's called a taking, you cannot over restrict something to the point of not being property.
For that purpose?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jesse.
So, uh. You remember?
I made the, I made the motion, well, I, we didn't make a motion, did we?
Yeah, we have a motion, you moved and, and Jim second, so if you want to amend your motion, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in the motion for the C S R provision until we have our county attorney pick look at it. Jesse's recommendation.
So a second, I'll second, all right, we have a motion by Kiefer to amend the previous motion, and seconded by Jorgensen. To allow for County Attorney Pritchard to review the amendment to see if this is indeed a takings of private property. Uh, for this guy. Those in favor of the amendment to the. Motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now the motion has been amended, is there, are you in favor of, is there a motion to approve the amendment as amended?
I'll make that motion, so move.
Second, all right, we're gonna move to the second to approve the amended as amended, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, motion carried. Are there further amendments?
Yes. Thank you, well, three G. Oh, I. Number one, long winged turbine generator, meteor, meteor, tower, tower, A D L S.
Number one, no wind turbine generator meteoric tower, tower A D L S shall be taller than specified. Determination of a no hazard by the technical behavior. Said determination shall be filed with the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of bill. Two, no wind turbine generator meteoric tower, tower A D L S shall be taller excessive by the Board of Adjustments based on we're gonna change that to supervisors. I'll start over. No wind turbine generator, meteoric tower, tower A D L S shall be taller than specified by Board of Adjustments, based on the recommendation that I know is out. Number three, no wind generator, big hog, tower shall be taller than four hundred feet. Number four, substations, buildings, seawalls. Director shall comply with height requirements expected. But five, there will be a limit of seven turbines in Floyd County, this includes existing Mid-America project. That's why I'm gonna currently just determine it's in Mid-America.
Uh, the language of the amendment actually only adds two things. The first one and two are in the existing amendment, what it adds is the following language. Yeah, that's right there. No wind turbine generator, biological tower, or tower for A D L S will be taller than specified in the determination, no hazard by the FAA, it's exactly the same thing. The only thing that's new really is, is the two languages, one, no wind turbine generator or meteorological tower shall be taller than four hundred fifty feet. And the other new language is this, there will be a limit of seventy turbines in Floyd County, this includes the existing Mid-America project. We have a motion, is there a second?
No. Can I, I can't, I didn't get a copy of that, can I, we can't, we're
Is there a second motion?
A second.
We have a second supervisor Kiefer discussion. Chair, right, you had Zodder, Mark.
I think somebody used the right word with poison here. I've really expected more from Supervisor Jorgensen and Supervisor Kiefer that there would be some compromises to this. There are a lot of people that think this is a good project to have. You have killed this with seventy turbines. You, I know Jim, you're gonna be out of here in a few months. I am totally shocked that I, I've been here for almost twenty years. And when we've have, or have had ordinances, the Board of Supervisors have worked cohesively in coming up with a working together. You have taken one side, you have not taken the side of numerous people, especially today, there's been lots of comments in support of having turbines. And you've taken one position only, and you do work for everybody in the county. Not just those that are opposed, and I'm just shocked at the direction this is going today. I've never seen a Board of Supervisors act in this fashion. I'm sorry, I'm just gonna add that you are sending a message that you do not want new business in this county. You are not supporting a huge venture that brings so much to this county. And it seems like you're anti growth for our small county.
I, I was about to think the same. Just gonna agree with, uh, in her car.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, John Solomon, in the Floyd County, so Board of Health, nine one one. Um, I do agree, uh, out of the car. What's gonna happen when we won't be able to have in our budgets? No, uh, our roads aren't gonna be there, my taxes are gonna go sky high. Are you guys gonna be the ones that are gonna pay for it? Are you gonna pay for my tax, my, my high taxes for you guys?
All right.
Nancy, this is Nancy Albrecht from Rudd. I totally agree with the previous two ladies. Jim, you're from my area. I'm, I feel bad now, you should have wrote or read my statement, I would have added more. So at least you could have represented the other side of the coin. I feel you are taking sides here, and you are, um, you should have solicited other ideas in that area. And I just feel bad, you should have read mine. Uh, there's fifteen thousand, some hundred people presently for population in this county. You have three hundred signatures, four hundred?
Five hundred.
Are they all from Floyd County? Okay, and both sides of the coin was explained to them, I assume. So.
You go ahead with your comments.
So, actually, if you don't present both sides, how can you say that they are against it? It's just my feelings, and I do think it's painted up here. My feelings.
Scott Larson again. All the meetings I've gone through for the wind turbines, it's been the wind turbine people leading the conversation. It's all about what can we do for the wind turbine people to keep them here? I, I didn't, I don't feel like, I feel like it's one sided for you guys. You guys are coming in, you're asking for things, you want things, you took back the setbacks, you made smaller from what we had before with the zoning commission. Why did everyone went to two point two five? I don't know, I'm going to three. Think about the concern of the citizens and safety of the, of the, of the people here. I, I just feel like you guys, at every turn, have gone in and have led the way on what you guys want, and we keep on giving it to you, giving it to you, giving it to you. I don't want to give it to you.
So you guys are here next to us.
So. That's fine, thank you.
My name is Jerry Vedder. And I think you guys are wasting everybody's time the way this is going. Why didn't you just make an amendment, no wind turbines in Floyd County? Save a lot of time, a lot of effort, and they got five hundred signatures. Because they got organized and stood there right by the, the, the stands to go to the fairgrounds, to the amphitheater, see the races and all that, and took names. Give me as much time as they had, and tell me that those are gonna mean that much, and I'll go out and get you more, five hundred signatures or a thousand. Can you give me that much time, sir? You're pulling a lot of weight on just those five hundred signatures. What about the thousands and thousands of people that didn't come, because they didn't think they needed to, because they figured that you guys do the right thing? But all you're doing is going by their, what they're saying, picking off little things, oh, amendment for this, amendment for that, oh, amendment for this. Why don't you say there's no amendment for no wind turbines in Floyd County? Thank you.
John Murphill, Rockford. Just to add here. Petitioners represent two point eight percent of the common.
Kayla McGregor, Nashua, Southern County. The petitioner signed a petition for a height limit of five hundred feet and a limit of seventy turbines. We did that in hopes that we would not have to continue revisiting, having people come back and back and forth to the county for turbine projects. And that was why we wanted the limit. So we really request a limit, and five hundred feet was the height we requested. And two point two percent may be true, I believe that. But we went and specifically found rural residents, we did not go to Charles City, we didn't canvass Norris Springs or Marlborough, our bigger areas of population. These are rural residents who will be directly affected by the turbines, and so I strongly encourage you guys to consider something. It doesn't, however you guys work out the numbers, but we support you.
I just said, sure, you do, I'm agreeing.
I didn't care what happened.
I said, sure you do, I said, sure you do, just support it.
Hi, we're out here, um, more than once, Jen, you've spoken, speaking at the mic.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know. We're playing by the rules, not about, I think, just between, or definitely, uh, I think.
Yes, the point is, is well made and understood. Uh, we're not to comment on your comments. We're here to hear your comments, we don't comment on your comments, so please keep your remarks about presenter's comments to yourself. Thank you. Chair recognizes, as you claim.
I said, I'm a energy manager, project manager. Just to, just to speak plainly about the ordinance we have here with the, the planning and zoning commission, uh, proof of law, right? So without any amendments that were discussed here tonight. And to discuss point here, so the, the ordinance is, it would be as, as, you know, recommended by the, the planning and zoning commission, one obvious, uh, most restrictive ordinance that is still workable for wind energy amendments. And if you do, if you do want more regulations, like some of the one petitions, like the two that are here, the four hundred fifty feet, the set total seventy, those are, are poisonous, those are, you know, it, it is a ordinance that would not allow more wind energy. And so we are, we are trying to strike a balance here to try to it, it was two sentences of regulations prior and, uh, in ordinance, and it was currently in ordinance, actually. Now it's point seven pages, we want to be able to have our participation and still be able to feed the energy to the community and work with everybody in this room to try to make it workable. We just got, you know, we don't want to get paid out, that's all.
Yeah, we have a five minute throw-in time. Back into the basis rest of the evening. Can you start keeping track of the time?
Yes.
We should only be debating this ten minutes, public comment, so from now on, start referring to that. Do you have any final remarks anyone would like to make? Yes, Tom?
So, so, yeah, the limitations that's proposed in the amendment, make it nearly impossible to develop a project and, and honestly, I know it's been said, you know, that we're, we're here, what we, what, what we have done in next era and what we're trying to do is reach partnerships, develop a project that both parties want to see. We understand through the ordinance language, and we've been very supportive of the process that we've been through. And, and, and happy to see how things come to light, and we knew there'd be some debate on this. But really, we're, we're here, we want to go where, where, where we're wanted and where a project wants to be developed. We bring a great value to the community, we feel we're a good company, we employ people that live in the community. We develop relationships, we sponsor events, we like to be engaged in the community, and we try to do it weekend and to build a good project. You know, if the ordinance moves through like this, you know, it's just, we'll, we'll, we'll find a place where, you know, where we are wanted and we'll work with, with those counties and those ordinances, so you know, I, I don't want anyone to think that we're here trying to shove a project down a bunch of people's throats without, um, you know, trying to be a partner in this. And, and I think that's what I've tried to advocate throughout the whole process is, we look at this as a partnership. We like to develop relationships in the county, we like to build projects we can be proud of and where we're supported, so you know, with what's going on this evening, I, I feel like we're, there's just not a desire for us to be here for the board that your decisions represent people, and, you know, it's, it's disappointing. Totally. And we would, we would love to see encouraging language in the ordinance that would provide an opportunity for us to move forward. But with those types of standards, it's just gonna be, it's just not something that we develop to, so appreciate the board's comments, thank you.
Dean Jane, speaking for the planning and zoning commission. You know, the volunteers that, that were appointed by the Board of Supervisors, we spent countless hours trying to reach a balance here. This, not all of us as individuals got what we wanted, but it was a compromise. And you guys just throwing us under the bus, as far as I'm concerned, I don't know how you're ever gonna get anybody working on the commission if you don't take the recommendations, or at least take some of it. This is ridiculous what you guys are doing, and you're just gonna stifle all economic development in Floyd County.
It's a shame that for everybody, for everybody.
I just, Kayla McGregor. The zoning committee did work, they spent countless hours on. However, I do want to say too, that we have to be careful when we're throwing people under the bus because um, some people that were told not to talk at the meeting on Wednesday, that the zoning board had, and then Dean also got up and spoke in rebuttal to some of the decisions talked about last week, and so we gotta be careful when we're throwing people under the bus. We should all be making sure that we take care of each other, not just ourselves.
Cindy Tretton, Rockford. Um, I would like to add that it's not just Floyd County that are affected by this, the, the citizens of the different cities within the county are affected also. So if you've got a petition that targeted only the rural members, I believe that's an unfair representation of your county.
Do you have any further comments from members of the public? Uh, final remarks on the, on the amendment, Supervisor Jorgensen.
Well, there's a lot to talk through there, um, I'm sure that, and, uh, remember it all quickly, but, uh, yeah, I had a lot of people in my yard. They're reaching out, I'm representing, I'm representing everybody, I, I represent the county in everything, in, in every aspect. But there's an overwhelming majority that have reached out to me in my yard, wherever I go, it's, uh, they want to talk about, they call me, they, they I'm, I'm representing these people that are reaching out to me. And I know there's others, but, uh, in the favor, there are people in favor, but, uh, I'm, well, I can't tell if the people I've talked to that are in opposition to this, and it's really hard to communicate with them. Oh, there's a lot of comments made, I don't know where you go with them, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. Those are the people that have reached out to me, we've, uh, the petition's volumes, uh, you know, I think Mr. Vedder mentioned, he wanted to know how much time he had, I think he probably had as much time as, as, uh, everybody else here yesterday. It's been, uh, an ongoing topic, so um, and there's probably more I could, could comment on, but, uh, that's what I got.
All right, thank you for comments, uh, on your final remark. All right. Thank you for comments, uh, on your final remarks. Um, we are considering amendments that would state that there are no wind turbine generator or meteorological tower shall be taller than four hundred and fifty feet. And there will be a limit of seventy turbines in Floyd County. This includes the existing Mid-American project. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Those opposed, same time, aye. Amendment carried. Is there a further amendment?
Yeah, one more. This, this would be under setback requirements, protected locations, uh, from thousands feet from sinkholes, two miles from incorporated city limits, twenty-five hundred feet from commercial feed operation and livestock facilities. Um, public park, our research and conservation area wildlife management, we recommend to follow fish and wildlife DNR recommendations. All public lands buffered one mile, forty plus acres tract, grassland, forest, wetlands buffered half a mile. Known bald eagle nest sites, activity unknown, buffered three miles. Known active bald eagle nest sites buffered five miles. Utility lines to fight minus hundred fifty percent of the total height. Road, well, two rail, those right of ways, one hundred fifteen percent of the total height. Road right of way, one fifteen percent of the total height. Dwelling or occupied building, twenty-five hundred feet, participating property line, sixteen hundred and forty feet. Non-participated property line, eighteen hundred feet.
Do you make specific references in the existing amendment to change it? Like you're striking where the specific involved it, so I could follow along.
There's a table in.
Page fourteen.
Okay. You got a question, what is?
Do you want to see it back? Can you share?
Right.
Are you okay? Thank you, John.
So some of these are the same. Oh, I, you strike, so that there's really only, how many changes there? One, the dwelling or occupied building. Moving that one to twenty-five hundred feet in your amendment.
Yes.
And then you're striking in the public park, you're striking fifteen hundred feet or three times the total height, whichever is greater, greater.
Yep.
Okay. What are you putting in the flag? Because if you strike, I just strike the entire language for public parks, RV trailer, park, conservation area, or wildlife management. Is there anything that replaces that language you struck?
No. All right. This is underneath, um, part of that conservation area wildlife management area. They want, we wanted to go with the fish and wildlife and DNR recommendations on all public lands. I'm not sure whether fifteen hundred feet or three times the total height, whichever.
Sticking out.
Just sticking out.
Yeah.
It's in, in there too, when, uh.
So there's nothing to replace it?
No.
Yeah, that's what they, this is replacing it.
All of this replaces it.
All of that above there is replacement.
Oh. Okay. Okay. And incorporate city limits is changed to two miles, one mile. Okay. Uh, is, is there a second to this amendment?
Um, I also had some considerations for this same, uh, item. Well, we, was that done at the same time?
No, we want to do this one first or separate. We want to take one amendment at a time instead of trying to put two on the floor. There's currently a motion on this amendment right here. We'll deal with this one.
The three point on page fourteen for setbacks? Yeah.
Yes.
On the sinkhole, I really wonder where the line gets drawn there. Uh,
There are no changes in the sinkhole language.
Existing sinkhole is a thousand feet, right?
Well, that's a new language.
It's not listed in here at all.
That would be an addition.
I see. Okay. So that's new language. Got it.
Um, let's see, yeah, we incorporated city limits. So I got feedback from, uh, three, three mayors. They want two miles. And that's what Dennis was advocating. Oh, twenty-five hundred feet for commercial feedlot, livestock facilities, uh, oh, I have a handle for two. All right. Um, going bald eagle, bald eagles nest. I don't believe Dennis had that on there.
That's in the amendment. The amendment says bald eagle nest sites, but activity unknown, buffered three miles, known active bald eagle nest sites, buffered five miles.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, road right of way. I got, I'm looking at two hundred percent of the total height there, just for the fact that, uh, people are traveling up and down these roads all the time. The big thing, a lot of this comes back to safety for me. And, uh, you know, it's people on the, on the road, right away, travels, uh, hard surface, four lanes. These wind turbines occasionally throw parts out. So I'll, I got copies if you all look at them.
No. Uh, we'll look at it in, yeah. So is this different than the, in the amendment that Supervisor Kiefer has, has on the floor? So it's out of order. That's what it is. Because you're dealing with one amendment at a time. If you're substituting a, unless you're substituting an amendment for the other one, uh, this is out of order for the time being. We'll see how this one turns out first of all. Um, is there a second to this? And, and it offered by Supervisor Kiefer. Is there a second to this one?
That would solve consistency issues in this one.
Pardon? I'm asking if there's a stack.
Oh.
That's the process. We get a second, we take it up, and we don't, it dies.
I think we have some overlapping things here and I, I feel like mine's got a little bit more than what Dennis is presenting.
So is there a second to the motion?
No.
All right. The keeper amendment dies for lack of stack. Uh, is there another amendment for the board to consider?
I would, uh, like to go present, I would like to present the amendment that I, uh, most recently passed out in front of you. Page fourteen, under page fourteen, number three, setbacks, um, changes non-participated, non-participating property line, even though it's bigger than, than its total height, whichever is greater. Um, and I'm going through the things that I had changed with, um, unless you're wrong with me at all.
No, just, the, the, uh, please refer to
The change.
The change is correct.
RV trailer, twenty-five hundred meter, five times total height, which is greater, road wide, probably two hundred percent total height uh, for public apartment, conservation wildlife, and follow DNR recommendations, public plans, one mile, quarter acres plus greater acres, grassland, forest, wetland, half mile. Known bald eagle, bald eagles nest, five miles. Known bald eagle nest, unknown activity, three miles. Livestock facility, egg building, including chicken, grain bins, twenty-five hundred feet, five times total height, whichever is greater. Incorporated city limits, two miles, cemetery, eighteen hundred feet, four, three point five times total height, whichever is greater. This is the pole. That's the one I started with. I really wondered if it should be more, but we're, uh, um, skip down to number two setbacks, incorporate city limits, and C-WEX proposed within two miles, and incorporates land sheltered city council, applicable city. Otherwise, setback requirement, C-WEX, of an unincorporated city limit, sheltered two miles. Change.
Yeah, what, what, you want on the public park article? Sorry.
All right. Um, uh, we have an amendment. Is there a second to this amendment?
No second.
I have a motion by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Kiefer, to incorporate the following changes to the protected location and setback requirement on page fourteen. Um, any comments from, any member of the public regarding this proposal?
My name is Kayla McGregor. I just wanted to state that we are in favor of this amendment. Um, that is exactly the things that the five hundred plus people have signed and, and majority of more people that I've even talked to than that. Um, so we just wanted to show our support. Thank you.
Yeah, is it, again, could I see a copy of that setback? Or just, I couldn't really follow it. Possible. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, similarly to a couple of the other items or, or posted here. Most, not all of it are poison pills with energy. Just making that clear, uh, and that, and, I mean, to a point on safety, if there's any, like, safety, you know, evidence of anyone being damaged or anyone being hurt from a wind turbine, I'd love to see any sort of evidence of that or the six hour, you know, just spreading across Iowa. If you have anything with that, I'd love to try to like you that there, that's not true. I haven't seen any facilities. So that's, that's all. So I can say this.
I can.
That's one. But I'll have one. Oh, I've got one here. Yeah. Um, I want to keep this. Yeah. Um, this makes a host of changes to the ordinance that's been presented to us by the zoning commission. And, um, adds lots of new language, adds new definitions that would be given a separated distance as a result of this. Um, there won't be any wind turbines built in Floyd County if this amendment passes and, and is actually adopted in an ordinance form. And, uh, that's not what I thought the process was about. Um, so, um, I cannot support the, the amendment that's presented. Final remarks on your amendment?
Uh, just respond, I, uh, I said, I think, with my yard, with all kinds of websites. I'd be happy to, uh, do some of that information. I'm not that tech savvy to pull up that quick right here.
Uh, we have a amendment and a second. The amendment would change the non-participated property line from a hundred and fifteen percent of the total height of the turbine to eighteen hundred feet or three and a half times the total height, whichever is greater. The amendment also adds language, RV trailer, travel park, in case that would be given a twenty-five hundred feet or five times the total height, whichever is greater, setback requirement. The amendment also adds language to follow DNR recommendations for public land, one mile, forty plus acres, grassland, forest, and wetland, one half mile. The amendment adds language that would include a known bald eagle nest active of five mile buffer. A known bald eagle nest, unknown activity of three miles. It adds language called livestock facility, egg buildings, including machine sheds, grain bins, which is similar to what we are going to ask county attorney Richard to define at a later date and gives that a separated distance of twenty-five hundred feet or five times the total height, whichever is greater. For that reason alone, I would question the passing of this license. We just asked the county attorney for this consideration. Now you're saying on final passage that you are giving that these a protected location. Incorporate city limits, move from one mile to two miles, cemetery is given a separate area of a separated requirement of eighteen hundred feet or three and a half times the total height, whichever is greater. Existing sinkholes would benefit from a one thousand feet distance. That's the content of the amendment. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye. Those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
I want to take this back, Richard, now that you reminded me.
Well, so you're not voting on the amendment?
Point of order, Mr. Chair. You've got a hundred one level to amend the clause.
That's correct.
It, it does, uh, there's no support, there's not to vote, not taking it back to Richard now, we've already discussed it. That's what your amendment stated for. It dies. Are there further amendment?
Yes.
Just hear more.
Page fourteen, with fourteen. Three, and waste of coal. The change in hand, blades and blade recycling byproducts are not to be disposed of landfills, including FMC landfill.
Is there a second to the amendment?
I've got it.
Yep.
A second.
We have a second. The move by Supervisor Jorgensen, second by Kiefer, to add language to the amended ordinance amendment on page fourteen, to include blade and blade recycling byproducts are not to be disposed of in landfills, including FMC landfill. Further discussion? Any comments to anyone in the public?
One quick. I guess it's a little technical where, particularly what other landfills can accept, I could, I think that, I have a legal question that maybe Todd would want to review on, I can consult, get like, the local landfill, of the county. That's like, I guess.
The reason I didn't want in landfills, because they're supposed to be recyclable, as of recently, and I just want to make sure that's promoted. I couldn't, you're very good, you wondered if we could dictate wherever, where they.
Yeah, like, our authority as a county to do that for landfills outside of this county. So, maybe having Todd review that might be a good idea.
I would make an amendment to the motion that we consult with county attorney, Todd Pritchard. Help us decide how the process is, disposal, whether it's landfills that we regulate with this ordinance or not.
Supervisor Jorgensen has amended his motion to state, we should consult with county attorney Pritchard regarding legality of if we can impose on other landfills that blades and blade recycling products are not to be disposed in other landfills. Is there a second to the amended motion?
Can I ask a question? Jim, did you check with FMC, see if, if they would take material or not other?
I did not.
Okay. That was my question. So, we need a second to that amended motion, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, amend the previous motion to defer on consideration of this amendment until we check with county attorney Pritchard regarding the legality of imposing the byproducts in landfills, other than the Floyd Mitchell County landfill. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried, now we're back on the, on motion, amendment as amendment. Those in favor of that motion as amendment, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion as amended carries, this is another one we'll discuss with county attorney Pritchard regarding its legality. Are there further amendments to come before the board?
Uh, please. Sixteen, I got the two-page number to go on, but, it's either sixteen or fifteen, three feet solid. Maximum solid levels, I want to change it, not to see, strike fifty and replace it with forty decibels.
All right, take forward, understood. The amendment changes the audible notice level from fifty to forty decibels at the closest portion of any dwelling or occupied building. I would, again, caution you, because we're talking about conferring with the county attorney in return to the definition itself, and now you're changing the decibels based on the definition, we're going to ask the county attorney to agrees with. Because we have changed, in large parts, the definition of what an occupied building is, to include grain bins, sheds, and the like, so once again, I would think it would be better off if we got the opinion of the county attorney regarding whether, what is a dwelling or occupied building, before we proceeded to change other parts of the ordinance that would regulate that. And I want to say, I wish county attorney Pritchard was here tonight, so we can answer these questions tonight. And at our next meeting, he'll be here to answer these questions. So we don't have to delay and ask questions, wait for another meeting. He'll be here next meeting to answer these questions.
I'd like to make a motion.
There isn't a second yet.
Could he withdraw this?
Yes, you could.
I'd like to withdraw the motion and defer.
All right, we're withdrawing the motion to consideration, are there other amendments to be considered?
Somebody read it, do you want to?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. Is this all new language?
It's an add, yes.
I think you already added in our.
Should we get it in our earlier?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So we'd have to make it an S?
Yes.
Fire suppression, all turbines and substations shall be equipped with operational automatic fire suppression. Fire suppression systems shall be designed appropriate to the materials and conditions present in the turbine, substation. Alarm signals from detection systems shall be transmitted to a central station proprietary, or remote station service to a constantly attended location. Alarm and fire protection systems shall be installed in accordance with state, federal standards, and inspected by state fire marshal prior to operation. Such fire suppression equipment shall be tested and verified operational on an annual basis by personnel certified such validation, for such validation by an independent third party.
Is there a second to the motion?
No second.
We have a second, by Supervisor Kiefer. Don, was this first question issued with both, and Thompson, all we have for the?
It was a little bit, uh. It was a bit, it's on discussion, but actually, ultimately, didn't make any motion to revise, I think. My understanding.
Can you talk into the mic?
Oh, sorry, my understanding. I don't know, I don't know, current models. Turbine, or main, or expressions.
That seems to be a pretty important question, are all wind turbines and substations operational with automatic fire suppression? I'm asking any representative of the wind turbine company, if that is doable, or can be done, or is them?
I, I, again, so, the fire suppression systems, they, I don't know of any projects, I'm not aware of any projects that actually have a fire suppression system in them. And the reason the industry hasn't been presented for the past thirty years is because they use oxygen, they work by releasing oxygen depriving gases within the cell, to take the fire away. And so, by doing that, if someone, one of the wind techs accidentally like knocked into it, or something like that, and it, the gas released while they're in there, suddenly, so, it's actually much more less safe to use these types of systems, and that's why we haven't been used. I, I'm not aware of any systems that have. Speaking for energy technicians who trained up in tower rescues, that they can safely evacuate. And generally speaking, if a turbine gets on fire, or we're establishing a parameter to keep people in the surrounding area safe. Just because there's usually a lot of rescues, first responders going up the tower, easily contained up there. So, I say.
Any other comments, any member of the public? Final remarks on your amendment?
That I believe that's in the board of county ordinance as well. So let's, we're ready to run.
All right, we have a new addition to the language in the ordinance, it states, "all turbines and substations shall be equipped with operational automatic fire suppression." "The fire suppression system shall be designed appropriate to the materials and conditions present in the turbine or substation." "Alarm signals from detection system shall be transmitted to a central station proprietary, or remote station service to a constantly attended location." "Alarm and fire protection system shall be installed in accordance with state and federal standards, and inspected by state fire marshal prior to operation." "Such fire suppression equipment shall be tested and verified operational on an annual basis by personnel certified for such validation by an independent third party." Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Those opposed, aye, motion is carried, are there other amendments? All right, Supervisor Jorgensen, state your amendment.
Page sixteen seventeen. Letter B, GPS tracking, all equipment operating on road with delays in excess ninety thousand miles. Grossways or operating on road with overweight permit shall be required, excuse me, shall be equipped GPS tracking equipment, which records the geographic movements of the equipment on move. Number two, permit holders shall retain all such tracking data and provide a process of such data to the board supervisors on request during construction base of project. Number three, at conclusion of the construction base, copy of such all, such GPS tracking data shall be provided to the board supervisors to be included in the county records. See. Prior construction act, and shall enter agreement before the county attorney includes the following requirements and amendments. In addition to all requirements for the county engineer's office, and for the county road use and repair agreement, if and when one exists. I can do, uh, spread C and D. Public drainage systems. Floyd County Public Drainage System Protection Agreement. Private construction act, that shall follow, established to see there's a Floyd County, Floyd County Public Drainage System Agreement. Want to add, private drainage systems, number two. The permit holder shall be responsible for immediate repair of damaged private drainage systems stemming from construction, operation, or maintenance of C-WEDs, such damage should be repaired as soon as weather permits and on a scheduled grid hole with effective landowner. The crop damage, dissolved, broken systems, the landowner, like, consigned by the permit holder. Letter E, post completion survey, number one, permit holder in Fort Miami, general need on completion of project, agree to necessary action. Need to turn roads to existing road and drainage stations as identified in section four, dot C, dot N, four, dot D. Expenses related to such work shall be borne by the permit holder, either directly or through reimbursement to the county as directed by the county attorney. Letter D, I want to add, damage, any report, any damage to public or private infrastructure, not included, but not limited to such things as roads, driveways, utility, any strange, uh, structures, bodies, water, etc., shall be immediately reported in writing at the moment of the damage item in Florida and Floyd County Attorney. Failure to report such damage shall constitute breach of ordinance, and work shall be required to call until investigated and the damage is completed and approved perceived by the board of supervisors. Number two, repair requirements. For any damage involving economy, state assets, the permit holder shall present a repair plan and is agreed upon by the county officials before repair procedure. Floyd County's senior authorized county official deserves to rate and authorize statements in county's authority, please, present at the time of repair at the expense of the permit holder for the purpose of observation in section. Number three, financial security, permit holder shall be responsible for restoring or cleaning damages as agreed. By the, applicable road authorities sufficient to restore roads and bridges to pre-construction condition or better. Financial security, and improvement of Floyd County shall be submitted, covering one hundred percent of estimated costs of all required improvements and repairs. This requirement may be waived by board supervisors by recommendation in Fort Miami.
All right, that's, there's a lot in that amendment, a lot of new language. Is this lifted from another county ordinance, or did this, this come from the a group, or, how did, how did you come up with all this?
It is combination, kind of a hybrid of, of the group, as well as some language that was brought forward from some other ordinances. So I don't think any of this language that I know of exists the way it is in other ordinances, but the thought process is a hybrid of culmination of citizens and Fulmination of citizens and. Other ordinances at my place.
As a, as a landowner of Floyd County who has, uh, in turbines on some of the property I have an interest in, I, I completely understand the intent of some of this. What you're saying in the GPS tracking, which is, uh. Off-road equipment that weighs in excess of ninety thousand pounds should be tracked because. Um, cranes that come in to fix the turbines are probably over that limit. And so this language about GPS tracking, I can understand where you're going with that. Um, and I understand certainly from a landlord's perspective, the, the importance of maintaining. Uh, your existing property in a manner that, uh, you can farm it and, and. And do anything you want with it. So I, I get what you're going to. Um, what is the Floyd County Road Use and Repair Agreement, if and when one exists?
Well, that's part that was taken from another county, um, so if there is one, we have, we would have to use that. You know, and, and maybe there will never be one developing in Floyd County.
Okay. Um. Yes, go ahead.
So given in our current creation. Before this amendment, there's a road use requirement required, which would suspend any official approval for. Reason or otherwise, so I think that is just more of a formal name for it, more or less. Kind of how I would term it, yes, okay, so, so. Prior, it has to enter an agreement of Floyd County. So that they'd be entering during that with the county. They'd be entering an agreement with the county to, for the road use and construction date essentially, that I think it's just a formal statement. Like a title essentially for that.
Under grayed infrastructure, number one, public drainage systems, what is the Floyd County Public Drainage System for total agreement? Other car, are you aware of any such, uh, group protection agreement that currently exists in Floyd County? I am not.
No, I am not.
We can, we can strike a, if not one exists.
Okay, um, private drainage systems. Again, I, I understand and I, I believe that. The, the companies have made allowances to maintain and repair, um. Private drainage systems, it certainly was the case that I've experienced on personally, um. Is that not in an agreement that, uh, the wind turbine companies that are posing to current people in Floyd County, I'm asking. Gentlemen, just talk to that's going.
Generally, the, the. If, if you're talking about specifically with the road use agreement, usually that's executed. After the permitting and, and you, when you're going to construction and then it's, it's a negotiated conversation with the, the county and the.
Well, I was specifically request with the private drainage systems with the easy, easy design.
Yeah, usually, usually it's just on the county ground.
Isn't that in the easement?
Yeah.
It occurs.
Usually, it's usually addressed in the lease agreement or the easement agreement with property. But it's a private agreement, so it's handled. By the two parties and the county is generally not involved in the private side. But there are, there's generally a language in your easement agreement that address. Uh, damage and how property is repaired, uh, and evaluated, so.
If I can give you an example. Uh, perhaps, uh, a participating, uh. Landowner in a turbine. Uh, the equipment travels over a drainage file, but, uh. This drainage of the neighbor's farm is not participating. Um. That's where this language is directed and number two. So perhaps the water would back up instead of the non-participating. Landowner.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, just a couple more questions, uh, damage reporting, it talks about any damage to public or private infrastructure, including but not limited to such things as road, driveway. Utility items, drainage tile, structures, bodies, water, etc. Um, what could possibly be in the except for category?
I guess we just got to put in there to cover anything else, but, uh, if you want to strike that, we can.
So I'm just curious, um, what that means.
Sure looks like everything was covered there, but, uh, I put that in to, uh. Make it broader, but I understand you want it to more defined and, uh.
Well, I was more concerned about the language that followed that because it says here that. Uh, that should be immediately reported in writing to the owner of the damaged item and the Floyd County engineer. And the next sentence, failure, failure to report such damage shall constitute breach of the ordinance and all work shall. Be required to halt until an investigation of the damage is completed and approved and proceeded by the board of supervisors. Um. So this language would allow any work on the. That's being already done would be recorded for halt until an investigation that damage is completed. That's the intent.
Well, yeah, they would have to, uh. Do an investigation to get the damage prepared, you know. My, here you say you don't want the work to halt?
Well, I'm just, I'm just clarifying what's in this.
Okay.
Language, so what, what happened, um. What, what the actual language is, so. And then for that financial security, didn't we, didn't we adopt the. Uh, financial security, we got a recommendation of ten million dollars, wasn't that correct?
Oh.
Financial security, that was set up specifically in the, uh. Ecomissioning section, so I think there's, uh, financial security for like a performance on structure, something like that, I'm guessing content, but I don't.
I'm sorry, I was looking forward to the, you know, had something in there about insurance too, but, uh. Yeah, the financial security. Basically, yeah, the, the, the language raised it will be submitted covering a hundred percent of the estimated cost of all required improvements and repairs. Is that what you're wondering?
Yeah, um.
We had a section, we have a section for financial security commissioning section, um, I guess the kind of Mark's question. This is intended just for like the construction and application and stuff, yes.
You're talking about. It's sort of, just so earlier, uh. We did approve a change. You know, we sent that one to the first amendment, we took up with a change. That would give the board of supervisors a thirty, not the board of adjustment. That one is, was going to be deferred to the county attorney, is that right, John, or is that what we did on the first one? Then we'll look again.
Yes, that's what we did.
All right. All right, just curious, uh. Why the board of supervisors would waive the financial security on a recommendation by the engineer? Why, why does that make sense? Why would the engineer waive the financial security of, of the wind turbines? By recommendation, why would the board of supervisors, it's not a recommendation of the county engineer waive the financial security for this? That's what this says.
For the purpose of, uh. Have the county engineer have some input.
Well, I appreciate that, but we're, we're talking about financial security, the roads, bridges and public and private infrastructure in the counter. I, I see no reason why I, as a member of the board of supervisor, would waive that. Simply because the county engineer thought it was a good idea, I mean, these are the notes that we. Take our produce to market on, so I don't understand that portion of it.
Maybe we, it's, it's a money, if we want to, uh, strike that last time.
Well, I, it's, I'm just concerned amendments that are offered and not gonna. Get into all the details of every amendment that you suggested that we're going to change, but we are. This is the amendment as written that we're talking about tonight. And, um, I just raised some questions I have regarding the. Um, some of this, uh, not all, and I, I understand some of this, I, I really do about. Some of this tracking and some of this stuff because I, that's, that's rather important. Um. But I think there's some plausiveness that. I don't think really intended. I don't think you really might remove the financial security from the winter companies and take that away, so we don't have that. Even upon the recommendation to county engineer. So, um, that's just a question I have.
Right. Sure, that points off, I guess. Under, uh, current iteration of, uh. Ordinance, uh, so one to five, uh, pardon. For there, uh, those are just examples of requirements of the county engineer could require. Um. And, uh, so, and, and then the initial statement that. Uh, the county engineer could require, you know, more agreements, agreements when to, you know, and then approvals. So also keep in mind that we have, uh. Part three there, that it's possible, always during the year. And, uh, road or runway, there's construction or better condition, so. Anything in the road that would be required to fix their expenses, a hundred percent. So that's our, there, I don't know if I could just sections, that's what I'm understanding for you. That could be put in, you know, put in the particular method, um. Cause that'll come through you and I'll put that road stream anyway.
Are you talking about number three or the last sentence of number three?
Numbers three and this whole section is of, of the county engineer department. Raymond, so is that all specified in construction? Okay. For anything on the road right away, public road, right away.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Uh, we actually have a motion, but we don't have a second, is there a second in this motion?
Well, second.
Wait, now the second. It's been moved by Jorgensen, seconded by Kiefer to approving this amendment that we've been discussing, is there further discussion? Any comment from anyone in the, on the audience? Um. Those in favor of the. Amendment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, aye. The motion is carried. Um, we're here for a public process. We're the board is offering amendments as they have the right to do. We're going to consider every one of them, uh, and vote them up or down, uh, are there more amendments to be considered tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you. Please explain your amendment.
Uh, page seventeen eighteen, strike B and change it to G. And we'll move down to number one decommissioning plan. Um. Minimum of four foot of depth below the ground for any other so- associated facilities. So, uh, meaning the, uh. Uh, removal of the concrete, um, change it from four feet to six feet. Uh, tower removal by drop will not be allowed. Requirements. From four, infrastructure, land use protection requirements will also be followed for decommissioning. Number two, decommissioning follow-up upon, upon completion of decommissioning activities, the county engineer and permit holder will verify. That all planned activities have been completed per the decom, decommissioning plan. Or notes made regarding items not completed. Records of completed activities will be retained by the county engineer office for five years, items left in place. Contrary to the decommissioning plan will be reported in the form of easements. In the county reporter's office, any concrete turbine bases of greater size than three hundred cubic feet left in the soil regardless of the depth shall be reported in abstract. For the land to ensure that future property owners or prospective buyers are aware of its presence. Uh, strike number two, change it to three. Move down to, uh. The seawax or individual wind turbines shall be presumed to be at its end of useful life. Will strike two thousand and change it to two hundred thousand kilowatt hours of electricity. Generated in one year unless development on it is granted an extension by the board adjustments. Strike number three, change it to four. Um, strike number four, change it to five. Letter I. Prior to any grading or construction, fifty percent of the total estimated decommissioning cost shall be provided. And strike one hundred percent, the remaining fifty percent. Will be changed there, um, we'll move down to number five and strike that, change it to six. We'll move down to number six, strike that, change that. Excuse me, thank you Gloria, um, letter I, I. Uh, bottom paragraph, decommissioning funds. As may otherwise be required, the Iowa Utilities Board shall be considered sufficient, provided such funding needs requirements will strike that. Uh, that concludes that one.
Uh, Supervisor Ferguson, what is power removal by drop will not be allowed?
Um, by drop is, uh. Some way or another, it's like cutting a tree down. They just let it fall, uh, or they can, or they have in some cases. So rather than use a crane to take it apart and put it on the ground, um. In some cases, they chose to drop them, that, uh. It's showing a lot of, uh. Debris that flies fiberglass in particular and, and other parts. So when it hits the ground, it, it creates an impact and some. Debris to be over from that, so that's what that is.
I actually wish the county attorney could put it here because I think this additional language under decommissioning follow-up doesn't make sense to me. Any concrete turbine base of size greater than three hundred cubic feet left in the soil regardless of depth. Shall be recorded in the abstract of the land to ensure that future property owners or prospective buyers are aware of its presence, like. That makes total sense to me, I don't see anything wrong with that, um, but, uh. It's. Some of these amendments are involved a lot, you know, there's one part, there's this part. And then we're changing, for instance. When a turbine is ended its useful life or when it is. Less than two thousand kilowatt hours per year. This changes it to two hundred thousand kilowatt hours electricity, so what happens if there's a turbine that's down for. Period of time for repairs or any other reason and it doesn't beat two hundred thousand kilowatts of electricity at one time. The Mid-American, uh, wind turbine project linked with the size of their blades and they were shut down for most of that summer. What would happen if, uh. Nobody does generate two hundred thousand kilowatt hours because they're doing something like replacing the blades, they're upgrading the turbines. Would that mean that it would be the end of useful life? Nobody does generate two hundred thousand kilowatt hours because they're doing something like replacing the blades or upgrading the turbines. Would that mean that it would be the end of useful life?
Well, according to this language, it would, but uh. I just felt that two thousand was uh. Too minimal, I mean. Uh, they generate quite a bit more than that. So that that would mean, you know, the two thousand kilowatt hours. What would that? Amount to a couple of days turning per year? I don't, somewhere, it wouldn't be very much. So that was uh. We just want them to be running and uh. And we need to add. Provision for. Repairs, but at this time it's not an amendment.
All right. Uh, excuse me, is there a comment on this amendment from the general public?
Kind of, I'm someone who actually agree with it, but in its locality, I'm pretty. Pretty concerned about painting. They would make the turbines. End the useful life if they produce less than two hundred thousand kilowatt hours a year. So. Comments for the board?
What would be a more reasonable amount? Oh. What would be a more reasonable amount than seven or eight hours, over two hundred thousand?
I I don't know. That's not the amendment before us.
Uh, just for the sake of uh. Making it a requirement, there's a lot of uses of will. Those should can shout, shout as required or something. Um. And then on the other end of things, in the fabric storage section, there's very similar language. Um. At a little reading, probably the dot this amendment, you could probably have. Compliment for that section as well.
All right, um. Uh. My own remarks and amendments, Supervisor Ferguson.
I don't have any too many, any kind of answers for results and possibly ask some questions, but uh. Um, we spoke about the power graph. Uh. I'm willing to leave it in two minute thousand, uh, that would promote uh. You know, a quick repair, hang up and run again. Uh, that's what they're supposed to do with the ground. So. That would, that would just promote quick repair and reinstall the blades.
All right, thank you. Um. Actually, I like some of this in it, but not in its entirety, uh, but that's not what's before us. We have to uh vote on the entirety of the amendment, so. Um, those in favor of the amendment? Is there was a second one?
Wasn't a motion?
There was a motion, but I don't think he said.
Second.
So now we have a second by Supervisor Kiefer. Um, so we have a. Bad discussion. And now sign the vote. Those in favor of this amendment that have drafted, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Are there further amendments?
Yes. I do have a amendment.
Right ahead.
Page nineteen. Possibly twenty. Um. We're gonna strike, we're gonna move forward, strike F, change it to I, liability insurance. Uh, resulting from negligence, equipment failure and/or natural disasters. Twenty million dollars. So I can read from there, but that that's the changes. I can see that a little bit now.
Please do.
So uh.
I know. First of all, first of all, let's let's see if there's a second before we start discussing it this time. I'm sorry that. We allowed that to go on so long. So is there a second to this? That's proposed.
Did you? Change the liability insurance from ten million dollars, twenty million dollars per current.
I'm looking. Second.
There is a second. Right ahead Supervisor Kiefer. Derek Ferguson. Pretty straightforward, it's ten or twenty, right?
Yeah. So uh. You know, you you. Light one of these turbines on fire, blow it through the wind, uh. Run it through, uh, how many acres of corn? Standing corn, uh. Find the ground ready to harvest. Um. And in the process, uh, you got forty percent humidity, forty mile an hour winds. Uh, some of us in the room have experienced that. So it's a, it's a big deal. You run it, run this fire right through uh. One of my neighbors in Chines, they probably have uh. At least half of that, well, three, seven, seven building in their machine shed. Uh, maybe more, I don't know. But they're not the only native of the machines at now, so. It's uh, them fires been really hot and uh, you can't, you can't get next to them by. I'm experienced, so. Ten is good, twenty is better. Uh. Man's town, I tell you, they're twenty million in there for the experiment.
Uh, John, did uh the uh. Playing zone information asked for wind turbine companies for recommendation about liability insurance and. Wasn't this set at ten million dollars after a recommendation? Um, mission. And their recommendation asked uh. When developers do review kind of what they have, compare and. Insurance and basic agreements and that sort of thing, and they usually, Isaac provided the comment which, which you know, you guys is sometimes. Um. And you, Isaac uh. You just, uh, it would take nine thousand acres. Uh, corn. Land to. Set up ways basically to reach that amount, but maybe they've done that. Ask if they would like Chickasaw County in their agreement. So if they've divided. Wanted you to consider that, you know, that, yeah, that amount. Has had that review. So you're doing that right now?
I didn't give it to you, you know, and I did some back there and I don't know. I wish I brought that with me.
I got a copy here for you.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not here because I was doing.
Yeah.
Because I, I, it was about the. Somewhere around two hundred less than four or four dollars. Uh, we're starting on the four dollar coin now, but we've seen it as seven, and I think a lot of the staff was ready to go to two fifty. Corn, so I felt the number was a little low when we went with your uh. Your uh, okay. Thank you. With your first this year for your presentation.
Supervisor Kiefer. Care to comment on this?
No. I know.
Um, you know, I'm all for ensuring that property owners in Floyd County get their fair share. If somebody has five million dollars in a shed of equipment and that is burned up, they ought to receive. Value of bad equipment. Um. So. I could be supportive of this. Um, I will ask the wind turbine company. Is this something, you know? About five million, ten million, twenty million? Uh, is this something? Prohibitive to you or? You know how insurance works, the more value you get, you can get it a little cheaper. Is this something we can do to ensure the property of Floyd County and take away that one? Tenth of one percent of turbines. Have a history of catching on fire. No, no comment. All right. Um. Closing remarks.
I have none.
All right. We have a vote in the second. Uh. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, motion is carried. Are there further motions?
Final ones.
Uh, state your motion.
Want to add condemn, condemnation. Excuse me, condemnation with risk. Eminent domain. Issuance of a C W X permit shall be conditioned on the permit holders enforceable promise supported by the consideration of the insurance of. Issues, excuse me, issuance of the C W X permit. That permit holder shall never use or seek to use eminent domain to acquire any real property interest or. Construct or operate the project.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ferguson, seconded by Keeper, involving eminent domain. Um, condemnation waiver of eminent domain. Uh, saying that the holder shall never use, seek to use eminent domain to acquire the real property interest to construct or operate the project. Question for you Supervisor Ferguson, is that allowed under Iowa law now? Can a turbine company use eminent domain to acquire someone's property to put a wind turbine against their will on their property?
I don't believe it's allowable now.
So what is the purpose of this?
We're using uh. Potentially using eminent domain. For. We don't want that to. Uh, find its way into the winter.
Does the county have authority to impose eminent domain by ordinance? Or opposition to it by ordinance?
I don't know if we have authority, but we can. Get them. To agree to this and.
Well, I think it's been clear throughout this discussion that winter companies in the state of Iowa do not have eminent domain authority. So just adding this language on condemnation waiver, I think imposes a restriction that the county can't enforce. Uh, and. In fact, the state of Iowa uh. Has ruled that they don't have that authority, so. Um.
Currently, it's my understanding the state of Michigan has eminent domain for wind turbines.
That's the state of Michigan. We're talking about the state of Iowa. But um, are there any comments for the public? This is the final, it's the final amendment?
It is the final.
And thank you for all the amendments. They're all um. You've got a supervisor. They can make amendments and they're all. To be discussed tonight, so um. Whatever the wishes of the board on this are. Uh, if we can discuss eminent domain further. Uh. However. This moment, however. You once again are getting into areas that you might really want to ask county attorney. Do you really have the authority to? Pose a certain thing on the. Of wind turbine company that isn't allowed by the state of Iowa. That's a, that's a just question I have, but um. It's been moved and seconded, so we'll take it to a vote. The chair recognizes Kayla. Um, McGregor. On this one.
Thank you. Um, with all the things happening at the state office, I think this amendment does allow for extra protection. If if something was to change at the state level in the future, to at least we could come back as a county and say, hey, we had this in there um years ago. And um, that's how we feel in that way when they come back at the state level. And say, well, there's nobody who actually has this in their ordinances. We have. Uh, something to refer to that shows that we actually had taken steps. In hopes to prevent eminent domain from happening in the future. Thank you.
Any other comment? Closing remarks on your amendment.
I don't have any. Talk about the remarks.
All right, those in favor of the condemnation waiver. Which is new language to be added. Somewhere. Doesn't really say. Um. Issue issuance of a C W S permit shall be conditioned on the permit holders enforceable promise. Supported by the consideration of the issuance of the C W X permit. That the permit holder shall never use or seek to use eminent domain to acquire any real property interest. Construct or operate the project. I don't believe that authority exists. I think it's clear. Not that I'm would support eminent domain for the, for wind turbines, I do not. But. I think this language is just. It's not allowed by state law. Yeah. In Iowa.
Based on the comments. Chair, agreement. Let's make a amendment to this motion to defer to county attorney.
Is there a second to the amendment? To the amendment?
Oh, second, yeah.
We have a motion, a second, motion by Supervisor Ferguson, seconded by Keeper to. Amend the proposed amendment to seek the counsel of. Uh, county attorney Pritchard, see if it is indeed. Legal. That appropriate, that's correct. Those in favor of the amendment to the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried. Uh, as the amended motion now, is there a motion to approve the amended? Motion as the amendment as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ferguson, seconded by Keeper to approve the amended version of the amendment seeking the. County Attorney Pritchard, people, uh, counsel regarding its validity. Those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried. That concludes all amendments on the board. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
All right, next item on our agenda is. Uh, review and action regarding the first reading of the amendment to the ordinance. Um, auditor car, state, for all of us who are still here, all the amendments that have been either. Approved or sent to county attorney Pritchard for further consideration.
The motion regarding change of the intent of the language. For us. approved. And then the change definition to buildings occupied. I don't know. Was carried. Two to one, the twenty minutes. And one for lighting was two to one, ten minutes. Saving lighting and lighting of firehorses in the green yard. Natural resource protection was devoted to monitoring. I think under the total lighting to the height of an under element. Going to slow down to one. Um, they think, um, three, zero, one thousand nine hundred and five seconds. Um, they, um, I don't know, I have all of that very long. Um, had one, one, seven, I did. Ways to follow. Um, which was very a very, um, sound desk phones. Uh, so getting on, still well, brought. Um, five hundred question was very few one. Maybe she doesn't have a name, but, um, one of those is carried three one. Tower drop of that, that was very good one. Uh, by building stones, that's carried three though. They found them patient when you're I don't know if they heard anything.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you for the card. Um, so now we're at point of the agenda where we're taking due and action regarding the first reading of the amendment to the order, as amended. So we've considered a number of amendments that's tight, some have been adopted, some have referred to county attorney Todd Pritchard for his recommendation. Um, so we're at the point where, um, we're going to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended. Uh, is there a motion to do such?
I'll make a motion to accept the first reading as read. Did I say that correctly?
Uh, we're actually considering the, the reading as amended.
Okay.
So we're all the amendments that other car just listed, whether they're going to county attorney or they were approved. So that's what we're voting on. Not, not the first reading includes those amendment.
I saw move.
Could you clarify the motion, please?
All right. Oh, Morgan's did. It was, it was, the motion was to approve the amendments.
The motion, yes, to approve the first reading of the ordinance as amended tonight.
Okay.
With the amendments that were approved and the referral to county attorney Pritchard for further consideration. So that is the motion.
And so move that motion.
All right. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, uh, to approve the first read of the amendment to the ordinance. Um, is there any comments from any member of the public? Uh, here and then, um.
Oh.
Any comments, anyone? Uh, chair recognizes Merlin Bart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Merlin Bart, County Outreach for Inven Energy. Um, there's two of us in this room, I think. Was more at one point, uh, tonight, it was actually a couple of state legislators and I think even a legislative, um, state representative, state senator candidate in the room. Uh, but I think, I think it's appropriate to share a couple of observations. Um, I happened to serve in the legislature in the early nineties when we had the livestock, we called them the livestock. Eventually what led to, um, the state legislature stepping in with House about five nineteen, which everybody remembers from nineteen ninety-five. And I'm sorry, two thousand and two, the matrix was passed. Both of those bills basically took away county authority to regulate livestock. And I happen to come from the county, Worth County that challenged those with the Department of Public Health ordinance, which went all the way to the Iowa Supreme Court and Worth County lost. At that particular point, when Worth County lost that lawsuit, from that point on, basically nobody wanted to build livestock units in Worth County. It didn't matter whether they lost the suit. It was just the issue of Worth County had given a message, they were closed to livestock operations. It has rebounded a little bit after twenty some years. But for the most part, the county lost that ability to actually encourage young farmers to get involved in livestock production. My observation in doing county outreach for Inven Energy in about seven or eight different counties across the state right now is what we basically have is an exact replica of the livestock wars going on county by county. Some counties are very friendly to wind energy. Some counties are unfriendly to Inven Energy or to renewable energy. And specifically with what you are going to vote on right now, frankly, whether you believe so or not, you have prohibited any wind energy development in this county. You have basically said to the, to the Charles City Economic Development Corporation, we're going to turn down, and I don't know what the project is that connects there is proposing, but you're going to turn down a hundred and seventy million dollars in economic development for this county. Can you imagine what would be reported if Mitas wanted to do a hundred and seventy million dollar expansion in this county? Or Zoetis? Or you had somebody else coming in that happened to have a different business that wasn't wind turbines? You basically are going to be giving a message as county supervisors corporately that, that Floyd County is closer to business. And I think that's really sad. And the second thing that will, that, that I think is, is appropriate to talk about is if this continues to happen on a county by county basis and there's a Patrick, you can actually pull up a map of where these brush fires are, are happening right now. The state legislature will step in and they will set a statewide standard and you won't have the authority to determine um, what specifically would be best to apply to your county. And that's just a prediction, I guess. Um, I'm young enough, I'm getting old, but I'm young enough that I think it could hypothetically happen in the next ten to fifteen years. I don't necessarily think it will happen here, but last year in the state legislature, there was a statewide citing bill introduced. And that is a premonition of things to come. And the state legislature will be watching the actions that counties are taking, including the action that Floyd County is taking tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the super.
Thank you, Merlin. Uh, any final comments from any member of the public? Here comes Gordy.
I believe, I believe what you're doing here is a lot of work. And it's, you gotta stand up, you're not going to keep everybody happy. But we do have industrial park that is sitting empty if somebody wants to come to this county. This does not mean the county is closed. This just means we're going to make Brent a good neighbor and if they're not going to be a good neighbor, we don't need him here.
Thank you. Is anybody still listening on the phone? Anyone will make a comment on this?
Three.
Yeah.
Uh, now's the time to do so. We're prepared to take a review and action on the ordinance as amended this evening. Uh, anybody have wanted to comment on the phone line? Um, before we vote, I just want to, uh, remind the, those of you who are here, some of you are here when this whole process started. And, um, I can remember distinctly when we agreed to hire John Robbins and start the process. I used a metaphor. A metaphor was a football. And I said, we're going to put that football on the fifty yard line. And we're going to have hearings and we're going to work together with the zoning administration to develop an ordinance that met the needs of the wind turbine industry so they could grow and be placed in Floyd County. And yet at the same time, meet the needs of nearby neighbors and have concerns about our precious natural resources, our water, our air, our land. I remember Boyd Campbell was there and he talked about that to me. And, uh, the point is tonight, I think we diverted far from that. I think we've diverted to a position that is indeed not going to allow any wind turbine companies to locate Floyd County. And that's not what the goal of this process was. Um, we all have our opinions on how it turned out. I just think as a result of some of the things tonight, that that is not what this board collectively agreed to, to do and has not been part of the process as this has worked through the month. So for that reason, I'll be voting against this tonight. Uh, chair recognizes other car. Sorry, I didn't even turn it on.
There's been a lot of discussion here about what we vote to do and those motions that were approved for the amendments and I I'm just would wonder if it is a good for you to vote in favor of, um, this first reading without considering talking with the county attorney. Um, you know, you can say, I guess with Inven Energy that they've got seventy-nine people that they have agreements with. And if there is anything in what we're looking at in this first amendment that, or first reading, I should say, that maybe is, um, sensitive for potential for a lawsuit. And then maybe would, um, not take action on the first reading maybe today in this county attorney. Uh, some of these ones that you have, the amendments that you approve.
There is a motion and a second on the floor to, uh, consider the ordinance as amended. And so, um, that's where we're at. Any final comments from many members of the board before we vote?
I don't have any.
All right then, um, what we're acting on tonight is the first reading of the ordinance as amendment, as amended. And, uh, there will be a second and a third reading. We'll talk about that when we talk about future agenda items. Those in favor of the ordinance as amended tonight, um, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side, aye. By two to one, the, um, the ordinance as amended is approved for the first reading. Uh, future agenda items. Um, we're going to have three readings of this ordinance. We're going to get comments from, uh, county attorney Pritchard before we have the next meeting on all these questions. So we don't have to, we'll have that before we come to the meeting. So talking about when we could set the next, um, reading of the ordinance as amended. Uh, John, you had some limitations on when you could be here. Um, I know you sent us an email. If you could just tell us what, when is available or what is not? When you're available.
When are you thinking of doing the next one?
We're, we're going to have a second reading, yes.
When?
That's we're asking when you'd be available.
Are you thinking of doing here?
I don't think so, but, uh, pardon? Most likely we've been holding the meetings, we've been getting good attendance on that. I don't know if it has to be here. Uh, I think we could probably have it in the, uh, the, um, yes.
Next week, Monday, Tuesday evenings, I have meetings with other cities.
Summit Carbon has a meeting on the thirteenth of August in Rockford in the evening. Yeah, so maybe that wouldn't be the best day.
You go the nineteenth, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday available and a busy Thursday, Friday a week. And I'll be out of the office, um, the last week of August. I believe it is liberty.
So is there a, a, a time and place that we can have a second reading of the ordinance as amended?
The nineteenth here.
The nineteenth.
Be a Monday.
That'd be a Monday. Uh, we're throwing it out.
But he wasn't.
August nineteenth.
I'm sorry.
August.
That would give nearly two weeks for county attorney to, uh, respond to these questions that have been answered. All right. Um, and I would, if that's fits with everyone else's schedules.
August nineteenth.
Yes.
At what time?
To be, to be determined.
Uh, I think a lot of our crowd must work well for six thirty. So we're going to, are going to be a meeting. Sounds good. I'll make more to have the second reading in the law enforcement center on August nineteenth, beginning at six thirty PM in the courthouse.
I'll second.
Have a motion by supervisor Ferguson, second by Keefer to approve this consideration of the second reading of the ordinance as amended on August nineteenth, Monday at six thirty PM at Law Enforcement Center of Floyd County Courthouse. Is there further discussion? We got two minutes since midnight, so, uh, keep your discussion short. Remember, nothing good happens after midnight. Yes.
Will there be a red line of the ordinance?
Almost certainly. Yes.
Yes.
There will be a red line of the.
Concentration of Gloria to make sure I have it right.
All right then, uh, final agenda items, uh, item six, retirement.
I'll show move.
We have a motion by supervisor Keefer, second by Jorgensen to adjourn. Those in favor, say aye.
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 If anyone wants to help with.